Informed by the town clerk that we've achieved decorum after some of our Zoom technical issues. I declare that the meeting will now come to order. My name is Bob Dis and I'm proud to be your town moderator. Welcome to town meeting. Tonight, as is obvious, since you are all here, we'll be conducting town meeting again with a new approach as a virtual town meeting. My approach will be to conduct the introductory portion as we always do with the pledge of allegiance, the invocation and reading of the rules. And then I'll read a motion to conduct this meeting as a remote town meeting as required by the legislation that enables the remote town meeting to do so. The motion modify some of our rules and I'll explain when finished the reasons. Well, then answer any questions and vote on the motion. If the motion passes, the meeting will continue. If the motion fails, I will adjourn the meeting and we will reconvene at some future time and place. So off we go. In keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meeting will now open with an indication by the Reverend Lisa Ward of First Parish Church in Milton. I very much appreciate Reverend Ward taking some time from her busy schedule to join us. Zoom admin, would you please unmute Reverend Ward and then would you turn on your microphone and camera?
Good evening. It's an honor to offer the invocation for this evening's meeting. Let us settle in and join our hearts in the spirit of prayer. God of all naming, source of all being. Thank you for your presence in our lives and in this town meeting. Guide us to the wisdom of harmony and diversity and curiosity toward difference. May we know the abundance of love and care for the town of Milton in this meeting. The abundance of shared service in this gathering. It's been a rough year, Holy One. Difficult losses and disruptions in our lives, yet new connections and innovations. May we honor it all, be guided to our strength within and be grateful for each other this day and in the year to come. Ashay, Aho, amen.
Thank you Reverend Ward. Appreciate your attendance very much. Now, will all town meeting members raise your right hand in order that the town clerk may give you your oath of office? Madam clerk, you're on.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as a town meeting member, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the town of Milton, and that you will fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction. So help you God. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I will now read a list of the newly elected town meeting members. If I can find it. So I'd like to recognize Regina Campbell Malone, Joseph Cuthbert, Brand Elliot, Deborah Felton, Kristen Cosiel, Terrence McNeil, Brian O'Halloran, Rachel Ricardella, Pony Stackpool, Alexis Bergeron, Jill Clark, Carolyn Ferguson, Keith Schleser, if I'm pronouncing it right, Anita Asher-Watkin, Margaret Oldfield, Rebecca Seidman, Matthew Demartus, Thomas Stanton, Douglas Hunt, Andrew Damato, Jennifer Shea, Regina Murphy, Michael Demody, Alessandra Higgins, Robert O'Brien, Sean O'Rourke, George Barrett, Michael Brady, Sarah Lovely, Jamie Mulligan and Robert Leavash. I'd like to congratulate all these new town meeting members and offer them my applause. So congratulations on your election. I would also like to recognize some elected officials who have been retired from office after numerous years of service. They include town meeting members, Richard Sweeney, who served for forty-four years, Andrea Gordon, who served for thirty-six years, Helene Hadad, who served as a town meeting member for twenty years, and Laura Conway, who served for fifteen years. So thank you for your many years of service. At this point, I would also like to recognize some current long-serving town meeting members by order of their longevity. So Virginia Donahue King, these are fifteen years, Veronica McCarthy, Roxanne Musto, Elizabeth O'Connor, Richard Shea, Richard J. Shea, LOLs, William H. White. And then at twenty years, we have Arthur Doyle, Catherine Fagan and Lyndley Sheridan. At forty years, we have Judith White Orlando. At forty-five years, we have Kevin Donahue and Robert Sweeney. And at sixty years, we have Mrs. Marita Manning Cronin. So thank you all for your many years of loyal service to our town. I'd also now like to recognize one local elected official. As you know, from time to time, the officials contact me and ask to speak. We had three local officials at our February meeting and I was unable to connect with a newly elected state rep from, I believe, the Suffolk 12th. So at this point, I'd like to recognize Representative Randy Fluker Oakley. So administrative, we make sure she is unmuted and Ms. Oakley, welcome to say hello.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator, and to all the administrative staff of the town of Milton and to all of the wonderful town meeting people. Just want to thank you all for your leadership and service to our community. I will not be before you long, but I know there is much business to be conducted, but just want to name, it's been an honor and privilege to serve you. I just celebrated my first one hundred days a couple of weeks ago, filed several bills, co-sponsored many more related to the pressing challenges y'all have named for me as things that are important to you, and I look forward to continuing to serve you and making sure that we're advancing a 12th Suffolk where everyone is able to thrive. I'll be sure to put the contact information for my staff and me into the chat and Q and A so folks have it at their reference and please don't ever hesitate to contact me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Luca Oakley. Short and sweet, the way our members like it. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, Board of Health and other boards, committees and departments who are not town meeting members to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees and departments upon the understanding of, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is afforded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Vision to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there are, I'll skip that point. Third, we will now briefly review briefly, particularly for the benefit of new town meeting members, some of the procedural rules for the conduct of the meeting, which unless there is an objection will be the rules for the conduct of this meeting. First, town meeting members are required to check in with the town clerk through Zoom and to participate through the Zoom webinar. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members are not allowed to participate as voting members of the town meeting. Second, any town meeting members wishing to speak to an article or pending related matter will first go to the nearest microphone and upon being recognized by the moderator will identify himself or himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you've not been recognized by the moderator, you're not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on an article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to go to the microphone and wait to be recognized. Third, by longstanding tradition, while any other registered voter of the town who is not a town meeting member may not vote here at town meeting, he or she may be recognized to address town meeting provided that the voter in advance of the particular session has obtained permission from the moderator. There have been requests from residents to speak during this annual town meeting. Fourth, any person having a monetary or equitable interest in or who is employed as an attorney or otherwise by another person interested in any matter under discussion shall disclose the fact of his or her interest or employment before speaking thereon. Fifth, with reference to each article in the warrant, the recommendation of the warrant committee shall ordinarily be considered to have been presented in the form of a motion by the chairperson, which has been seconded by the secretary or other member of the warrant committee who is a town meeting member. Unless the moderator otherwise expressly states at the time, the question to be voted on under each article will usually be whether to, whether or not to accept the recommendation of the warrant committee. In other words, generally, the recommendation of the warrant committee is the main motion pending under the article. In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article, i.e. members will vote yes if they favor the article and no if they oppose the article as recommended by the warrant committee. Six, pursuant to section four of chapter two of the town's bylaws, the moderator requires that all substantive or complex motions be reduced to writing and presented to the moderator before submission to the meeting. Seventh, by longstanding tradition, Town Meeting Time, Handbook of Parliamentary Law, third edition, will in addition to the bylaws of the town of Milton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts be the rules of order for this meeting. Eighth, any member desiring to show slides, make a PowerPoint presentation or any other visual material before the meeting must make appropriate arrangements and inform the moderator. Ninth, members are urged to obtain all information needed by them prior to the meeting. However, by tradition, the moderator will recognize any town meeting member for the purpose of requesting additional information relevant to the matter under consideration. All such requests must be directed solely to the moderator, who will attempt to ascertain the most appropriate official who should answer such an inquiry. Answers will not be provided while the member still has the floor in order to prevent the temptation to cross-examine the person providing the information, which is not permitted. However, the moderator will separately recognize a member once for the purpose of posing a follow-up question. Sometimes the information is not available or is not immediately available and the request for information will simply not be fulfilled. Tenth, when it is announced by the moderator that the meeting will proceed to vote, debate will be closed and the pending question will be put to the town meeting. Eleventh, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by vote the sense of the meeting. If the moderator is unable to decide by the sound of the voices or if his announcement of the vote is doubted by seven town meeting members standing in their place, the moderator shall then proceed to have a standing vote on the question. If the vote is further doubted by twenty-five town meeting members standing in their places, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order. And each town meeting member, upon his or her name being called, shall rise in place and answer yes or no. Twelfth, no vote shall be reconsidered at the same meeting, except upon a motion made within one hour of the adoption of such vote, unless by two-thirds vote, provided that the time which elapses during any adjournment of the meeting shall be excluded in concluding the hour since the adoption of the vote. Thirteenth, because of the constraints of state law pursuant to proposition two and a half, the budget articles as recommended by the warrant committee to this town meeting are at the maximum tax levy limitation permitted by state law pursuant to proposition two and a half. While the moderator will entertain motions to amend budget articles upward, the town's total appropriations may not exceed the proper two and a half limit, thus to avoid potential chaos and the necessity for additional meetings to balance the town's appropriation within the levy limit on the amount of revenue that the town may raise by property tax. Your moderator both urges and expects that any member offering upward amendment to a budget article will also, for the benefit of following town meeting members, specify an offsetting decrease in some other line item or specify what additional source of revenue is or will be available. In addition, it is also permissible to make increased funding subject to an override ballot vote by the registered voters of the town. Fourteenth, each person speaking to an article or amendment is limited to ten minutes and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard or more than twice on the same question without permission of the town moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to ten minutes at the discretion of the moderator. And fifteenth, consent agenda rule. At least five business days prior to the opening of the first session of the annual town meeting or any special town meeting, the moderator may propose to all members a consent agenda, listing all the articles which, based on the records of recent town meetings, the moderator deems to be non-controversial. At the first session of the meeting, at the request of any five members present, any article may be removed from the consent agenda so that it can be debated and voted upon in accordance with the provisions of Town Meetings Rules. A member requesting to remove an article from the consent agenda may state the reasons for the request without debate. All articles remaining in the consent agenda shall then be voted upon without debate with a two-thirds vote required for adoption. Hearing no objection in the Q and A. I will, we will assume that these will be the procedural rules for this meeting. Now, certain matters coming before the town meeting require two-thirds vote. In accordance with chapter four, four eight of the Acts of nineteen ninety-six, I will entertain the following procedural motion which allows the moderator to declare that a two-thirds majority vote has occurred. The motion is, on matters requiring a two-thirds vote by a statute, account need not be taken and let the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters as provided in General Laws, Chapter thirty-nine, Section fifteen. If someone, one of the voting members would please say so moved in the Q and A, and if there's a second. Mr. Donahue says so moved. I take a second from Ms. Agostino. If we can put the polling question up, please. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Zoom administrator, do we have some folks on the phone? If we could unmute the phones. On the phone, all those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying aye aloud.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote nay. Thank you. You can close the poll. And display the results. The motion carries with a ninety-nine percent margin with one abstention. Thank you. Some observations, this year we have several articles that will require a two-thirds vote. I'll inform you of those before we vote on those motions. At this point, before we proceed with the business of the meeting, we have a few announcements from some local officials and town meeting members. Per our bylaws, the Chair of the Audit Committee, Ms. Kathleen White, will make a brief few remarks. If we could put up Ms. White's presentation, please, and Ms. White, you'll be recognized.
Great. Thank you very much. And you'll put up the slides?
Yep, they should be coming up.
Okay, great.
There you go.
Yep, okay. If we can move to the next one. And thank you very much for, you know, allowing me to speak. I'm the Chair of the Audit Committee. We're required by the rules to report to the annual town meeting on the ongoing compliance with the management letter and internal control recommendations. As I mentioned annually, our independent auditing firm, Powers and Sullivan, in addition to providing an opinion on our financial statements, also provides a management letter and within that letter is an annual list of suggestions on improvements to strengthen our internal controls and, you know, improve our operations from a financial perspective. Obviously, these recommendations don't in any way inhibit them from providing their clean, unqualified opinion, but they are extremely helpful in getting into the weeds of, for us and the Audit Committee of the way that the town operates. If we can advance to the next slide, please. And so what I'll go through there were four comments from the prior year and then three new ones in the current year. And so I'll just give you the status of resolution or in process on the prior year ones and then just give a brief synopsis of what the current year ones are. One of the items from the prior year was to document internal controls, and this is particular to the school department with respect to federal funds received. The written documentation was completed, we considered completed last year, but the final approval from the school committee came during the fiscal year 2020. And I will also note now, I'm reporting on the year that ended nearly ten months ago, and obviously we're nearly done with the the next fiscal year and our outside auditors will go through the work for the upcoming year end and we'll get an update on all of these. So the good news is this item was completed and resolved. So, you know, good work by the school folks. If we can move on to the next one. There are two items that we consider in process. One has been around for a while, but it's the adoption of the use of the purchase order system. All the departments that are going to use it have adopted it with the exception of the fire department, which we thought would be complete during fiscal year twenty. And it did not happen, but but that is the one exception that still remains and we'll get an update on resolution and adoption of it at this year end. The other item is an item from the treasurer's office with respect to abandoned property and tailings report, which is really, if you will, uncashed checks. So if they have not been, you know, put up for notice and all, then the cash can't be brought back into the town's funds. So the treasurer has been working on it. There was some progress on that, but clearly the, it is not brought to total completion yet. So we are, you know, sort of giving credit if you all that it is in process, but needs to get resolved. And so that's an item in process. If we can advance it in the next slide, please. Prior to your items that are still open in this one, it's a little bit of a thorn in the side. We get a similar comment every year, which has, you know, has not come to total resolution and it has to do with bank accounts that need to get reconciled in a timely manner. And just, you know, it does not happen and it just is a question of the controls around all the cash reports. And it is always a timing issue when the cutoffs are and all, but nonetheless, you would like good controls around this issue. And it has been, you know, frustration for members of the Select Board, and I know it has been brought to the attention. Town administrator will now be, you know, be getting involved and seeing what resolution we can bring, whether it's a, you know, systemic thing to say that we shouldn't have so many points where cash and checks and online payments, you know, all, you know, get collected by the town at various points. But this is one for the treasurer's office to, you know, get control of and get very crisp and clean on. And so it continues and has been different accounts at different times. But getting to a nice, clean closure and all this would be greatly appreciated. We can move on to the next one. So there were three new items in the current year, and obviously there's, you know, a variety of departments involved in all of these comments. The first one is the HR department, and that just needs to do more timely reconciliation. It's done annually. It really should be done far more frequently than that on a monthly basis to reconcile withholding liability amounts or withheld from people's pay and matching up with insurance bills to make sure the right withholding is done, that we're making payments for the right people. And so more, far more frequency than annually needs to be done. The next item is on treasurer's manual checks that our auditing firm noticed that there were, there's a more frequent use of manual checks used during the year audited, and so the comment was to really develop some policies and procedures for the use of manual checks to really limit the instances in which they are used. And so that was the recommendation. This is a new item and we'll get an update on the progress that has been made during the current year. And the last is another, again, another reconciliation item between the retirement system, you know, bank bank accounts and the treasurer's office to make sure those two, you know, bodies formalize the monthly cash reconciliation procedures. So there's a lot of, you know, procedures that, you know, obviously could be updated and tightened up and included the longer time that goes in between things, you know, the more of a challenge any reconciliation becomes. So these are always very helpful recommendations that come from our outside auditors and we do appreciate all the time and observations that they put in and think there would be great improvements. Understanding that the year that fiscal year 2020 and 2021 are obviously uniquely challenging circumstances, but nonetheless, these are important, important things to get addressed. So I will stop my presentation there and see if there are any questions.
I see. Ma'am, so I think we are, thank you for your presentation.
Super. Thank you so much.
So the next two orders of business, we have a number of folks on the phone where we only identify phone numbers. So our Zoom admin is going to call out and try to get you to identify yourself by name and then we'll proceed with the motion to conduct a remote town meeting.
Okay, so phone number ending in zero eight zero. Again, zero eight zero. You will be disconnected. Star six to unmute. Telephone number ending in five five four. Again, star six to unmute and please announce your name.
Margaret Oldfield.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in six four seven. Star six to unmute. Please announce your name.
Frank Doesman.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in zero two eight. Star six to unmute and announce your name.
Pat Pocarelli, Precinct Eight.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Pat Pocarelli, Precinct Eight.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in four nine four. Star six to unmute. Again. Telephone number ending in four nine four. Star six to unmute. You will be disconnected. Telephone number seven five nine. Star six to unmute and state your name. Again? Telephone number ending 759? Star six to unmute? You will be disconnected? And Mr. Moderator, that, that concludes the numbers.
Thank you. I see there's a couple of questions by the participants, but I think the first order of business I need to attend to is entertain a motion to conduct the remote town meeting. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll read this motion that authorizes us to conduct our business tonight. When I complete, if someone approves this, they could type into the Q and A window. So moved and we get a second and then we'll proceed to a vote. Moved at the Town of Milton, conduct this 2021 annual town meeting as a remote town meeting, using the Zoom webinar technology as recommended by the Town Moderator and approved by the Select Board on Wednesday, March 7, 2021. Further, during the annual 2021 remote town meeting, only the following rules will be modified to conform with the limitations of the Zoom webinar technology. Rule one is replaced in its entirety by the following. First, town meeting members are required to register for town meeting with the town clerk and join town meeting via computing device by clicking on the town meeting link emailed to them in advance. The town clerk will confirm their registration as they are admitted to the remote town meeting. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members will only be admitted to the remote town meeting with their prior permission of the moderator. Rule two is modified as follows. Second, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first either click the raise hand button or press star nine on the phone. And upon being recognized by the moderator, will identify herself himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you're not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to click the raise hand button or press star nine on the phone and wait to be recognized. Rule 11 is modified as follows. 11th, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by electronic vote the sense of the meeting. The moderator will display and announce the results of the electronic vote. If the vote is doubted by 25 town meeting members clicking the raise hand button or pressing star nine on their phone, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order. And each town meeting member, upon his or her name being called, shall unmute their microphone and answer yes or no. By looking the Q and A, I see a so moved. Is there a second for this motion to conduct a remote town meeting? Then, is there any discussion on this motion to conduct? Now, at this point, I see two hands raised. I see Ms. Joan Gankarski and Mr. Leroy Walker. Sounds like that is not Mr. Walker's question. I see Ms. Gankarski will unmute you and you'll be recognized. If you could unmute, ma'am?
Unmute. Okay. My question was in regard to State Representative Randy Fluker Oakley saying that her information would be posted in chat, but we don't have a chat. So where will her information be posted about contacting her and her staff?
Let's see, let me conduct our crack team.
Mr. Moderator, Town, Town Administrator Mike Dennehy here. I can collect that information and post it on the town's website.
Mr. Fay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm just rising to express my disappointment in the technology of this meeting. I don't know why emails have been sent with links that do not, with pass codes that do not work. And it's not an equitable meeting when it's, when we're not on the same platforms. Thank you.
So noted. Okay, Ms. Gankarski and Fay, assume your questions are answered. You can lower your hands. Seeing no further discussion on the motion to conduct a remote town meeting, we could put up the polling question? All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And if we could unmute the phones? All those on the phones, please signify your support by saying aye. Opposed, no. Abstaining, please say abstain.
Aye.
No.
You can mute the phone? And we can close the poll. And display the results, please. The motion carries 98% yes, 1% no, and 0% abstain. So with that, I'll recognize a few other speakers who've asked time to present a few brief remarks. I'd like to recognize Ms. Caroline Cincella of the Board of Health. Ms. Cincella, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And good evening, everyone. Hello, I'm Caroline Cincella, the Milton Health Director and Precinct 8 Town Meeting Member. I would just like to give you a quick COVID-19 update for the Town of Milton. Since our first confirmed case on March 1st, 2020, Milton has had 2,327 cumulative confirmed cases of COVID-19. Our daily average currently is less than five cases a day. And today, good news is we had zero cases. The B117 COVID-19 variant from the United Kingdom is more transmissible and is accounting for 30% of the cases now in Massachusetts. In Milton, we are primarily seeing young and middle-aged adults test positive for COVID-19 virus. Within the last three months, Milton has seen a marked decrease in confirmed cases that has kept our town in the yellow zone with a percent positivity in the last 14 days of about 1%. That's great news. Currently, we are in Phase 4, Step 1, a reopening Massachusetts with easing of social restrictions with each step forward to minimize COVID-19 health impacts. On May 10th, Massachusetts will move to Phase 4, Step 2. And May 29th, further restrictions will be lifted. Massachusetts Department of Public Health is planning for all sectors to be fully open by August 1st. Of course, this could change depending on the data. And all this information is on mass.gov. Please go to the Milton, Town of Milton website. And under the red ribbon, I post daily count updates. And Boston University of Public Health is still gathering cumulative data and reporting on the Milton COVID-19 cases by age, race, and sex. I encourage anyone 16 and older to receive the vaccine. And I had a news flash on my phone about 30 minutes ago that the FDA is set to authorize the Pfizer Biotech vaccine for those 12 to 15 years of age by early next week. So that's great news. The Milton Health Department administered 840 doses of Moderna vaccine January through March to police, fire, EMS, healthcare workers, homebound residents, and seniors over the age of 75. I would like to thank town employees, nurses, and volunteers who assisted the Health Department in our vaccination efforts. The vaccine is now readily available in many local pharmacies, health centers, and larger venues with over 800 sites across Massachusetts. I am hopeful that the cases will continue to trend lower and we will see decreased disease, hospitalizations, and deaths as we look forward to better weather and summer activities. Be well, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to point out, before we proceed, Mr. Walker, I'm going to get to your question. I see in our session, we have 256 elected town meeting members in our attendee pool. And we have an additional four in the panelists. We have 260 out of 288 elected town meeting members and ex officios, which is the largest number that we've had in any of these, now our fourth virtual town meeting. I think our prior peak was about 240 or two, or so in February. So I know we did have some trouble at the beginning, but we've got very large attendance and a vast majority of all the members are in attendance right now. With that, Mr. Walker, you've been patient. I see your hand raised. We recognize Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Mr. Moderator, I, I think it would be helpful with regard to Ms. White's report if we could have the Treasurer respond to those areas that were cited in the management letter as needing the attention of the Treasurer, specifically what he sees as the issues and when he expects they might be resolved. Some of these issues have gone from year to year. So I think it would be helpful to have the discussion at the same time that the audit report is presented.
You're requesting Mr. McAuliffe to reply right now?
Yes, if, if you could have Ms. White put the slides back up and he could respond to each of those items that involve the Treasurer's Office.
Yes, we can put the slides back up.
Thank you.
And Mr. McAuliffe? If you are on the line, I believe you are. Let, let the slides come back up and you can be recognized.
Hello?
Mr. McAuliffe, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay, on the abandoned property and tailings, we have done 18 and 19, we're in the process of completing that. Right now, they are listed on the town website. So if anybody wants to go on, look on the town website, you may have money that's owed to you. That should be finished within the next two weeks. So that one should be taken care of. You know, to the next one? Bank reconciliations, that, that's an ongoing problem. There's, we have to collect money from every department in the town. Some departments are better than others. They're getting the money over to us. Last year, there was one where we, we booked the money in June. It didn't clear the bank until July 1st. So that's, that was the issue there. And we're, we're still working on it. I mean, it's, it's always a work in progress. We have to collect from the schools, the police department, the clerk's office, park and rec. It's a matter of getting everybody on the same page and getting that money in to close out the year end. But the next one? Manual checks, we've already discussed that with the auditors. We'll use them now on a limited basis now for payroll issues. If money is kicked back due to somebody closing a bank account for direct deposit. And we stopped using those for the vendor. They're going through the, we're, we're canceling the checks, pointing them out, and we're going to run them through the vendor warrant again. The retirements, bank system reconciliation is all set. We had a new person come in on retirement. She just didn't understand when she issued a new check, she had to avoid the old check in the system that has been since taken care of. The next one?
That's the last slide.
That's it, okay. All right, any questions?
Any additional questions on the report of the Audit Committee? Mr. Walker?
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Thank you. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Just a question from Mr. McAuliffe. So as, as I understand his comments, does that mean that the, those year-end reconciliations are going to be a problem and therefore an audit finding in the management letter each year? Or is there a way to eventually resolve that problem?
Well, it, it's, it's resolvable. It's just a matter of getting everybody to get their work in on time to the Treasurer's Office.
So that would require the cooperation of the Town Administrator and, and the Treasurer?
No, required, police, clerk's office, park and rec. Every, every office that doesn't turn over to the town, it requires all them to get on the same page, get the money in before year's end. Right now, I do provide each department with the unit bank statement. So what's outstanding and what, what they need to turn over to the office?
Okay, I, I, I don't want to prolong the discussion. It would be helpful if it's clear who, who has lead responsibility for resolving that.
That'd be me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Seeing no other questions related to audit, two more brief announcements. Mr. Mike Mahalcheck of the Milton Rotary, you're recognized for your one-minute announcement. Mr. Mahalcheck, you there?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I was going to share the screen. And I, as I've listened to the meeting, I've, I've taken my one-minute presentation down to like, as short as it can possibly be. But I want to thank you, Mr. Moderator, and town meeting members. I'm Michael Mahalcheck, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7. I'm the Treasurer of the Milton Rotary Club. And I want to let you know that over the past few weeks, many Milton schoolchildren have spent hours drawing and coloring and creating art while imagining a world without hunger. It's not unlike what town meeting members do as we spend hours debating and creating bylaws and budgets, imagining an even better Milton. What we've done is we have a project called Art Against Hunger. We have a student design, the, a reusable shopping bag, which we're going to offer for sale to the community at $10 a bag. And I want tonight, announce, announce the winners of, we had three finalists and one grand finalist. So let me see, I'm going to share my screen if I can. The, this is broken down by age group. The kindergarten to second grade winner, do you see this? Zoe Quiatic, grade kindergarten in Calico School. This design.
I don't see your screen yet, Mr. Mahalcheck.
Oh, that's... Share, share, share. How's that?
Gotcha.
Okay, that's Zoe's artwork. It's beautiful. She's a kindergartner at Calico. She's going to win a $25 gift certificate to Blick Art Materials. Now, in the third to fifth grade, Lily Maxi, a grade four student at St. Agatha's, designed this. And the grand prize, a $100 gift certificate to Blick Art Materials. And the design that will go on the reusable shopping bag goes to Alessandra Fizzolo, seventh grader from Pierce. This is the design that she came up with.
Oh, my gosh.
Milton Rotary thanks all the participants in this contest. All their work is going to be displayed in the Milton Library and on Milton Cable Access TV. And we want to thank our judges who had a very hard job picking out winners from so many cute pictures. We've got many, many pictures to choose from. And a huge shout out to Will Adamsek and the staff of the Milton Lobby, Library, without whose assistance this project could not have happened. These bags will be available soon at the library on Saturday mornings. Rotarians will be there to distribute them. Details will be available in the library newsletter and the Milton Rotary website, which is, I can leave in the chat, but it looks like this. It's a way to donate to Art Against Hunger, and we will reserve a bag for you. This is a, this is a cause, I think, that we can all get behind, and I hope that you help support us. I'll leave the website for the Rotary in the, in the chat. Mr. Moderator, thank you very much for this time. I hope it was less than a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalcheck. Time well spent. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Diana Agostino, who's the chairman, pardon me, Chair of our Council on Disability. Ms. Agostino will share the screen for you and you'll be recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Can you all hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. The Milton Commission on Disability, as you'll all notice, is nowhere in the warrant. We are in the annual report pointing out what we have done in the past year. But we're not funded with any tax dollars or donations. So what we wanted to share this evening is that the commission, which now has a full nine-member board, which is very exciting, is looking for volunteers. Basically, everyone who lives in the town, we want you to use your own eyes and ears. Little things like reporting a pothole where a child's bike might, or even an adult's bike might hit a pothole, causing them an injury. We want to prevent disabilities in our town as well as help those who do have any type of disability, whether it's helping in... whether it's helping an elderly person with snow removals so that they don't get hurt. There are many ways that all of you Town Meeting Members and any residents living in the town and listening this evening could help by just notifying the Department of Public Works through their report of problem on the website, or just contacting any of the commissioners or the non-emergency police department, which everyone should have saved in their phone, has 617-698-3800. I sure hope I got that number right. The second point we want to share with everyone is, and it actually started here with the birth of former President George Bush, who was born in the Graves Historic Home over on Adams Street. It was President Bush who, over thirty years ago, instituted the American with Disabilities Act, whereby any resident, any employee, any visitor to our town can make a request to the ADA Coordinator for the town, who also happens to be the Building Inspector, for reasonable accommodations. And over the last nine years, we've actually made some headway, and you can read all about those in the annual report. But Mike, if you would please pull up the screen on Smart 911, the website. We have Mike Lynch over at the here we go. The most important request we have of everyone this evening is Milton actually has a program, a system. It's HIPAA-protected. It's Smart911.com. Smart911.com. Please download the app on your smartphones. Be really smart and download the app, but also go to the computer. Because on the computer, you can let the first responders know before they even get to your house, as soon as that call goes into 911, the dispatcher can let the fire department know where your gas cutoff is. They can let them know how to enter your home without breaking through your front door. It's all HIPAA-protected, and it's not just about Milton. When you travel anywhere in the United States, a lot of other cities and towns have started to be a part of this Smart 911. So we really are going to start to watch the numbers increase as we ask more and more residents to register on Smart911.com. Take your children's cell phone and make sure, teach them how to register. Because cell phones are the new norm. Lots of people don't have a landline. If you use your cell phone and you have Smart 911, if you're in an emergency, whether you're an adult or a child, they'll be able to access who to call, who to contact to meet you at the hospital. They'll also be able to identify if you're a diabetic, or if there's any other medical issues to be addressed. I know that the last time the commission presented this, one other town commissioner asked us how to get this program in their town because they found it could be very valuable when the police are being called to a house where someone might have not a physical disability, but a mental disability. And you want the police department to be aware of that. And we hear these stories all the time on the news, you know, that something happened at a household. It was an adult, and yet nobody knew what their exact issue was. And then, Mike, if you can pull up the last bit of information here, it has to do for anyone who has an iPhone, which if we were in the auditorium, I would ask everyone with an iPhone to raise it up and find out if you've entered your safety information, your medical records under the Health App. So the Health App shows a little heart in a white space. It's a red heart in a white space. It's on the iPhone. And when you complete that information, even when your phone is locked, as you can see the phone right here, the medical alert button shows up. So that even if the emergency responders who are called to the scene can't access your phone, they can slide the medical alert to find out what medical conditions you may have, as well as to find out next of kin or healthcare proxy to contact. So that part of your iPhone is not just to slide the power off. It also has the medical alert. And most important, I'm sure the Android has a similar system. I didn't get a opportunity to put that picture up there for you. But it might sound like a little bit of information, but each of you could help either save a life or save someone from being disabled. So thank you again, Mr. Moderator, for giving us this opportunity to share this invaluable information with the town.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. Before I proceed to the consent agenda, a point of order has been raised in the chat by Mr. Zulus of the Select Board. If we could unmute Mr. Zulus, and you recognize her? Sorry, just a minute. I'd like to recognize Melinda Collins, the Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, at this time, I would like to move that Article 5 be taken ahead of the consent agenda as there are several budgets that if they were put into the consent agenda and needed to be addressed in Article 5, we could not do so. Thank you.
Okay. If I could see in the Q and A, is there a second in the Q and A? Mr. Andreas Lessing has seconded. We'll now entertain discussion. So what we're doing now, folks, is Ms. Collins has asked, we advance Article 5 to the beginning of our agenda prior to the consent agenda. This motion is subject to debate and majority, like almost any of our other motions. So I'll now ask, would anyone like to speak to this article? Mr. Walker, your hand is still raised from the prior question. I don't know if that's intentional or it is not. I'm looking at the attendees. I don't see any hands raised. With that, I assume there are no, again, if you're on the phone, you want to raise your hand. Star nine to raise your hand. Just a second, please. I see Mr. Matthews. Mr. Matthews, you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
You're kind of faint.
Sorry.
That's better.
Okay, this Scott Matthews, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I was wondering, with that suggestion, does that mean that the school committee report is going to be before that as well?
I've spoken to the school committee about Article 5, and they'll be recognized during the conduct of Article 5 as one of the first speakers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions on this motion to advance Article 5? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Can we put the polling question up, please? All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. We also unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, we can folks on the phone, remember to unmute. You need a star six to unmute, and then star six to mute. So I'll try again. On the phones, all those in favor of the motion for the body?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no? Thank you, we can mute the phones. And put up the results. Okay, before I just, we have now displayed the results. Mr. Mullin, I think I'll have to come back to your point of order. The motion to advance Article 5 has passed 92%, no 6%, and abstained 2%. So we'll now proceed to Article 5 in your warrant, which you should find on page 22. Recommended that the town vote to appropriate $800,000 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of funding apartments in the following tabulation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. Department item, fire overtime, $125,000, police salary, $130,000, public works, general, $25,000, school, $520,000, total, $800,000. This was submitted by the Select Board and will require a two-thirds vote. What I'd like to start with first is to recognize the submitting body of the Select Board. Now, Mr. Mullin. Can we unmute Mr. Mullin for his point of order? Mr. Mullin, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I think you've answered my question. Because it's an appropriation of stabilization fund dollars, I understood we needed a two-thirds vote, and you've just announced that we would need a two-thirds vote.
That is correct. Thank you. So, Ms. Collins, you're recognized to speak to Article 5.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. First, I'd like to make clarification that the stabilization fund in Article 5 is not the special purpose debt stabilization fund to be used for fire station and Department of Public Works capital projects. The town has a history of careful stewardship of stabilization funds as prescribed by the Department of Revenues Division of Local Services. The stabilization fund was established in 1996. In 2003, the fund had $900,000. It took eighteen years to reach the 4.6 million that we have today. These funds are to be used for unexpected necessities and mitigate downturns in economic activity that were unexpected. Last year, the board felt that there was sufficient uncertainty to warrant the use of $1 million of the funds. Though FY21 fourth quarter property tax receipts suggested that Milton would maintain its collections, meals and excise tax and other revenues were less certain, and the state legislature did not keep to its legislative calendar, but rather opted for a month-to-month budget cycle based on the previous fiscal year. So there was a great deal of uncertainty at that time. This year, the state legislature budget calendar is on track, and revenue estimates are not perhaps as dire as previously thought last spring. However, they're not as we would have hoped. And a substantial revenue shortfall in meals, excise, and other sources, and the continued unpredictability due to continuing pandemic crisis warranted the use of stabilization funds for operational expenses for fire overtime, police salary, public works, and schools. Select Board members were not in agreement about several details in the budget, but worked together to develop a consensus that reflects our best collective thinking on what's responsible, given the amount of resources and information we have to work with at this time. We did not recommend lightly the use of an additional $800,000 in stabilization funds for operations in FY22, which added to the already outstanding $250,000 appropriated to the Reserve Fund at the December 2020 Town Meeting, total over $1 million. This year has its own special challenges, though, related to the pandemic, especially for our schools. Therefore, this town has worked hard to absorb the majority of the shortfall and reduced asks from the original round of budgeting several times. And in addition, we proposed the use of 100% of free cash for about $681,000, a first in my time on the board, and not a best practice. So that, in addition to stabilization funds, knowing that the town will need twice these amounts to meet expenses, build up free cash, and restore stabilization funds the following year. Should additional stabilization funds be appropriated for this year, continued use into FY23 to avoid layoffs would result in the depletion of the stabilization fund. This puts the town in jeopardy should another crisis arise and may increase the cost of borrowing for needed projects such as fire stations and a new school building. Thank you, Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. George Asher, the Chair of the Warrant Committee, who I know wants to speak to this article and also has some general comments about the overall town warrant. Mr. Asher, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much for recognizing me and the work that the Warrant Committee has done on this rather ponderous series of articles that you see before you. The Warrant Committee has put an exceedingly large amount of time into this budget, complementing the already enormous amount of work that has been executed by the Town Administrator and the various departments, the school committee, the Select Board, and all the constituent committees there too. So there has been no stone unturned and no discussion that hasn't happened in great detail before this warrant was put before you. Lynn, can you give me the first slide, please? Oh, that's strange. There we go. We were initially going to talk about our updated budget, major expenses overview, and several observations that I will make for the town meeting that are often and very, very clearly placed in my commentary and in the individual article commentary that you've already received. Next slide. Warrant Committee is presenting to you a level service budget, which is balanced, as we are required to do. Expenditures for fiscal year '22 have increased 2.5% over the previous year. As you have seen, our budget recommendation includes following a further reduction of $750,000, the stabilization fund, the $800,000 that Article 5 talks about. And as Chair Collins has indicated, this is nothing that we take lightly at the Warrant Committee, our stewardship of the stabilization fund. We like to akin to a piggy bank that really shouldn't be broken just to go to the candy store. And after a fashion, we look at the different ongoing needs, operating needs of the town very seriously, and do the best we can to equally allocate for the different departments and the needs as we see them and as have been voiced by our constituents. So as you will see, the Milton Public School allocation that we're recommending is increasing to $54.7 million in fiscal year 2021 over the level of the previous year of $52.9 million, which is a 3.3% year-over-year increase. It is one of the larger increases of any department. Additionally, if you look at it as a part of the total general fund appropriations, that's exclusive of enterprise funds and unappropriated expenditures, it now represents 49% 49% of the total fiscal year '22 budget, as opposed to 48.1 last year. Now, this compares with departments like Public Safety, which includes fire and police, which were essentially flat one year from fiscal year '22, fiscal year 2021 to '22, and others like the Parks and Recs, which are much smaller budget, which have actually been been reduced in real terms and in absolute dollars. Next slide, please. Included in the major expenses for fiscal year 2022, which was a little bit of a surprise to us, was the increase in municipal employee benefits, which includes health insurance, which has gone up by 6.6% or $1,300,000 to a record level of $21.5 million. Now, we've seen this growth over the past few years. We've had double-digit increases in prior years as warranty, I have watched this with some concern. The Warrant Committee has also observed this as now in fiscal year 2022, projected municipal employee benefits will represent 19.3% of the total budget, total general fund appropriations compared to 18.4% in 2021. This, as far as we can see, is unsustainable at this level. If it continues at this rate, the pressure on town finances will be exceptional. Unfortunately, the solution to this issue isn't universally popular, and certainly won't be popular among the beneficiaries as this continuing trend to employees adopting a higher contribution to health insurance, or limiting benefits, or finding a less generous health insurance program may in fact be alternatives that I know that the town is health insurance program may in fact be alternatives that I know that the town is looking at, of course, wanting to provide the best possible benefits for municipal employees. But again, being realistic, that we don't have a goose that's laying golden eggs in the basement of the town hall. And so there's a level of stewardship that has to be employed and a level of restraint that has to be applied as we see these increases growing faster than our revenues. Next slide, please. This pie chart illustrates how the breakdown of municipal expenses for the town from fiscal year '21, which you see on the left, to fiscal year '22 is evolving. The trends that we see are continuing where the school department and municipal benefits to employees now represent close to 60% of the town budget. That's 60%. The majority of the budget is consumed by public schools, employee benefits, public safety at $14.5 million, 14.6 in fiscal year '22, non-appropriated expenditures where and enterprise funds where we have limited flexibility to make any changes, if no flexibility. I included the Milton Public Library appropriation at $1,006,000 for two reasons. In the first place, I give Will and the folks over at the library the Loaves and Fishes Award for really creating an incredible level of service on a literally shoestring budget, and albeit a tattered shoestring budget as it is. But if you look at this budget, you can see that those components, those five components of the budget represent the overwhelming majority of the town's expenses, with the remainder, which is in the dark blue, $19.4 million last year and $20.2 million this year, representing now less than 20% of all expenditures. So that tells you how our schools are being funded and the municipal benefits for the municipal employees, the vast majority of whom are the public school teachers included. So generally speaking, Milton is not unique for towns of its size and its relative position in the Commonwealth and its demographic distribution, but that we have a very small commercial base and we're so heavily reliant on property taxes, this does create stress. Next slide, please, Lynn. So observations that I have made last year still are in place. I think we're looking at tax revenues that just don't... I wonder where the rest of those are, the observations. There we go. Where we have tax revenues which are not keeping pace with expenses, as I've said several times, Milton doesn't have a revenue problem, it has an expense problem. And we look at the potential for overrides to fund needs on a periodic basis. And as you can see from this chart, we have had several overrides. Since 1983, there have been 25 overrides, 16 of them have been successful, and of the 16, nine of them passed by a few of them 300 votes. Interestingly, off-cycle override votes, which did carry, may or may not have reflected town opinion, which is one particular example to align major decisions and major overrides of this nature to be timed with larger voter turnout going forward. That observation I don't change, and I think we have to be realistic and pragmatic about how we do the town's business as we look at potential overrides going forward. Next slide, please. Into fiscal year 2022 and further, we're still looking at the... we're contemplating the construction of a new additional elementary school, and of course, we have approved the fire station construction progress. All of these will, of course, be bonded if we get to the point of building a new elementary school. However, when you think of bonding, you still have to think of debt service, and our AAA rating, we now consider to be extremely important and sacrosanct. But I think at some level, if we do get to the stage where we're contemplating a new elementary school that will have to be funded through borrowings, there's going to be an issue of what is the AAA rating worth in terms of how much we have to pay in interest as an interest rate, a coupon rate on that debt? Having been in the bond business for virtually my entire career on Wall Street, I can actually say it's worth a question to say, what is the AAA rating worth for the slightly reduced rate we would pay in a spread for AAA versus AA? I would argue it may be negligible and may not be worth maintaining the AAA rate, but again, that is not my decision to make. Secondly, we have a relatively stagnant low growth in property tax revenues, and so I don't believe an override is avoidable in the next two to three years. Our continuing reliance on aid from the state and from the federal government and other sources is going to be with us for quite a while. On the Warrant Committee, we have these discussions periodically that as we look at the town budget virtually every year, we come down to that marginal million, million and a half, $2 million, which is elusive. We have many sacred cows in town, and nobody wants to make hamburger out of the sacred cows, but the reality is we're always looking for that last million to million and a half, and then we go around hat in hand to the departments, and then we try to shave off the margins as if we're trying to get a dresser drawer to fit after it's swollen. And so rather than use French chalk, we're taking a plane to it, and we know what happens when the swelling goes down, the drawer doesn't fit properly. I use these analogies simply because we do have a structural issue, and the structural issue isn't something that's going to go away. And the obvious path is to diversify our revenue base. Now, that's lovely, but revenue bases take time to diversify. Zoning changes are a essential thing, all kinds of... I don't have to explain to this town meeting, we have to look at studies for traffic, and of course, we have a structural issue in the town, just how Milton evolved, where business units and business districts were embedded in neighborhoods, and the footprints for anything commercial just don't exist as they do in other towns. We don't have a Route 9 to build on. We don't have a major thoroughfare or an area off of 128 like Westwood has to put up a strip mall or a large hotel or anything of that nature. So it's going to take time and imagination for additional infrastructure to expand, if at all, so we can accommodate zoning changes that will be necessary for the development. That having been said, Milton is a unique town. It is a bucolic setting within a 15-minute ride from the downtown. I think this is what attracts many of us to live here, where generations of families live. So before we make a change in what has been termed a very quaint and lovely town, we have to recognize that times change. It is the 21st century. We do have a responsibility, of course, to maintain that which we love about this town, but to also be pragmatic about how it's going to evolve, to harness the growth appropriately, and to make sure that as we make these decisions, that we're very judicious in how we go forward with it. Last slide, Lynn. It's important also to recognize, I believe, the contributions that are made by the varying town departments. I know that we all have concerns about the schools, about funding specific needs in the schools, and there are many of us have had children or have children who attend the Milton Public Schools or attended them or graduated from them. The issue is not do we support them or not, the issue is what can we afford and to what extent we can use our resources wisely to get the maximum benefit for our schools, for the teachers, and particularly for the students. And so I would argue that your town administrator, the school committee, finance committee, the Select Board, finance committee, and the Warrant Committee have looked at these issues from every conceivable angle. If we could have stood on our heads and done it, I think some of us would have. What we have come up with, what you see before you, is a reasoned and reasonable budget that takes into account every need that we have been able to evaluate. I want to also thank very much the members of the Warrant Committee. I have been honored to serve on the Warrant Committee for four years, and the idea that we all have before us is the greater good of the town. And whether we have, you know, differences politically, or we come from different parts, different parts of the community, we're all pulling together, and we're trying to pull together and do what we can for everybody. I'm grateful for this. I thank you, Mr. Moderator, and we can proceed with the business.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Asher, I have a question. We can hear your Warrant Committee on their other Zoom calls. Could you ask them?
Yeah, I just turned him down. I asked them not to do that while I was presenting, but, you know, nobody... I mean, sometimes it's like talking to your kids sometimes. They listen, but they don't.
Thank you. We appreciate you keeping your speakers off when you're speaking. With that, by prior request of the school committee, I'd like to recognize the new Chair of the school committee. I believe she's the new Chair, Elaine Craighead. Dr. Craighead, you are recognized, and we'll put your presentation up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
I'm not the new Chair of the school committee. That honor belongs to Margaret Everhard, and the new Vice Chair is Ada Rosemarin.
My mistake.
But I remain Chair, have the dubious honor of remaining Chair of Finance. So we only have two slides for you tonight, but I'm going to cram a lot into those slides, speak as quickly as I can to try to remain within the time limits that we were given. And I thank the Warrant Committee Chair for that lead-in. It actually sets up a lot of what I wanted to talk about tonight. First, I'd like to say that it was a long process getting here. Many hours of work were put in, not just by the school committee folks and those on finance, but a lot of hard work of the Warrant Committee, the Select Board, and the town administrator in putting this budget together. So we appreciate it. I'd also like to say at the outset that we're just talking about the schools, because that's our job and that's... we advocate for the schools. But I would encourage and hope that every department head or governing board of a department would also advocate for their needs as well. As the warrant says in Article Five, the recommendation is to use $800,000 of stabilization funds to balance the budget. As the warrant also says, that vote by the Warrant Committee was a split vote. The total reduction from our needs-based budget, not simply the rollover budget, but the entire budget based on our needs at this time, is a reduction of over $750,000. And that's real money. I'll take the last bullet point first, because that's basically off the table at this point. We were asked by the Warrant Committee, some members of the Warrant Committee, after our initial presentation of our needs, to go back and to tell them everything that we needed. So we brought to them four positions, a 504 Coordinator. For those of you who don't know what a 504 is, it's a plan for students with learning issues that don't rise to the level of an IEP or an Individualized Educational Plan. We have many 504 students in the district, and we need a coordinator, just as we need extra help within special education. We also need an exploratory teacher at the middle school to lessen the enrollment in those classes, which are very high enrollment, and to create a better learning environment for those students. We needed a paraprofessional, we still do. The cost of that would be less than $31,000 a year, which says everything about funding of the positions. And we also wanted a need very much, and this is the most dire need of this particular list of Tier Two positions, a pre-K to 12 behavioral health, social and emotional learning specialist. As you might imagine, during the pandemic, the social and emotional needs of students has only risen quite a bit dramatically in this last year. But we decided, in the interest of the whole town and doing our best by everyone, to cut those Tier Two positions from our ultimate request in the budget. They were cut for us at one point in the budget process, but we are leaving those off of what we're talking about to you tonight, even though they remain real needs and that in the future, the very near future, we will be asking for them to be funded. Due to the enrollment crisis in the schools, which is very well documented and preceded the pandemic, as well as the needs that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, we need adequate funding to deal with many issues in the Milton Public Schools and to serve the students to the best of our ability. The first thing that I'll talk about is the fact that this body of town meeting approved in December of 2020 six positions for us. Three of those in this budget for 2022 are being cut. I'll talk about that more in a minute. Our Tier One positions, the first group of positions that we went to the Warrant Committee with and requested, also were not funded in this budget, and I'll talk about those on the next page as well. So if you would go to the second and final slide, that would be helpful. Okay. In December of 2020, we were given six positions by town meeting. Thank you. Three of those positions have been cut for FY2022. We didn't even get to fund those three positions. We were given the six positions mid-year. As you might imagine, very difficult to find people at all, find quality people for those positions, and staff them mid-year, especially during a pandemic when we found that, you know, people might be reluctant to move from their current position. Those three positions that will be unfunded if the budget remains the same for FY22 is an elementary math interventionist. We don't have one right now, and with learning losses in math during the pandemic in the hybrid and remote models, we are in desperate need of one. And that one interventionist would serve all four elementary schools, hundreds and hundreds of students. I'll skip the high school science teacher for a moment and go to the middle school world language teacher. There are classes of 30-plus students at the middle school in world language, where students are just learning the language, need to have conversations in the language, need to have airtime in class. About 30% of those classes are at 28 or more, and nearly all classes are at 25 or more. And that's just too much in a language class. At the college level where I teach, those courses are capped at 20, and that's with kids who are 18 to 20 years old. We also need a high school science teacher, and the reason that I reserved this one is that this one has been partially staffed by staff members, either members of the administration or teachers, teaching an extra course during this year in order to basically make up for the high school science teacher that's needed. But that model is unsustainable, and it's crucial that we have a science teacher to be able to address the needs of the high school students. Those three positions, as you see there, equal $204,300. Of the Tier One requests that we had, we are hoping that three of them can be funded. We took part of our ask off, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But the most crucial to be funded of these three things are, one, an elementary reading specialist, just as I talked about with the math interventionist. The reading specialist will help to address students who are below grade level for reading. We do have programs planned this summer, but the summer cannot do it all with math and reading. And in fact, in a year or even two years, some students might not be making up for the losses that they have endured during this time. Secondly, a middle school guidance counselor. And even before the pandemic, these middle school guidance counselors have had caseloads of 330 students, when the recommended guideline is 250, which also feels like a lot to me, but 330. So they're 80 above where they should be. And given the social, emotional needs of returning And given the social-emotional needs of returning students in the fall and the persistence of those issues over a year, two years, three years out, of increased anxiety and feelings of isolation, et cetera, we couldn't need a guidance counselor at the middle school more than we do right now. And also, we need a high school special education teacher, because we are out of compliance with state mandates for numbers in those classes. So...
Craighead, you've got about a minute to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that equals $4,600,000 of total funding. We plan to use ESAR funds. Those are emergency relief funds for fiscal year '22 for nursing. Those are part-time nurses to help us staff, because we're out of compliance with state recommendations for nurses to number of students per school. There's only one school in Milton that is in compliance, and that's Tucker Elementary. If these positions were funded, it would result in a total of, actually, the number, I think, is reduced, but I need to check this with the select board, who may have voted on this at an earlier meeting today. Apparently, they have voted to give the schools $57,488 provided by the House budget in state aid to the schools. If that is the case, then the total that the schools, that would go to the schools out of stabilization would be $871,112, resulting in $1.151 million from stabilization, and approximately $3.5 million would remain in the stabilization fund. I'll say three more things, and then I'll stop. I promise.
Thank you.
The town does have a revenue problem, with all due respect to Mr. Asher. And I agree with him that an override should be coming sooner rather than later. The last override was in 2017. If we put one on the ballot for 2022, it would go into effect for fiscal '23, and that would be five to six years between overrides. We can't do without another one. The percent of the budget in schools, Mr. Asher said that the schools got a 3.3% increase, but 83% of our budget is salaries, negotiated increases in salaries. So it's not like the schools got a lot of extra money to do things with or fill positions. That went to salary increases. And finally, I also agree with Mr. Asher that interest rates are so low that an increase would be in interest rates for bonding, et cetera, and for debt service is negligible. So the schools are not making a motion at this time, but if anyone is moved to make a motion from the floor of town meeting, we would be appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to discussion. See, Mr. Matthews, you have your hand raised. You're recognized.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I was rising in response to the school committee's presentation, and I'd like to amend Article 5 to adjust the amount that is allocated for the school to be $871,000 instead of the $520,000, making the total pulled from stabilization to be $1,151,000.
Can I make sure we have those numbers right? So you'd like to change the $520,000 on schools to be exactly which number?
$871,000.
$871,000?
Yes.
You'd like to add $351,000 to the school appropriation?
Yes.
Which brings your total to?
$1,151,000.
$1,151,000. Okay, before we proceed, is there a second in the chat? I see Ms. Karen Friedman-Hanna has seconded. Mr. Matthews, would you like to explain the rationale for your motion while you have the floor?
Sure. As Dr. Craighead just pointed out, there were six positions that were desired, and the total of those six positions were about $408,600. But the schools are getting, or are promised to get, $57,000 from the, some money that came in. So you take 408 minus 57, that gives you 351. So adding 351 to the 520 would be 871,000. So... And I can speak to this after, or now? Is this my time to speak to it?
You're welcome. I would recommend you speak now, otherwise you'll drop to the bottom of the list until everyone else speaks.
Yes. So those who know me know that I rarely propose any amendments, except for maybe a missing Oxford comma, so I hope that helps to punctuate the gravity of my request. The pandemic has hit many families hard, and some more than others. And we've heard from many parents over the last year at school committees who emphasize the educational, social, and emotional toll that the pandemic has taken on their children. And I'm a self-witness. One of my kids struggled to learn with the hybrid model. If it wasn't for this math specialist that she was working with throughout the year, she would have been even farther behind than she is right now. So our schools are going to need more support staff and not less in the coming year to compensate for this deficit that a lot of our kids have come into, educationally, socially, and emotionally. But just because we've back in school full-time doesn't mean that this struggle is over. Our school administration and conjunction with the school committee have identified these resources that our children will need in order to not fall behind due to this pandemic that we are still in. So address those needs, as well as to have enough staff over the amount, to cover the amount of children that we have. I think the school needs the opportunity to fill these positions that they have previously defined. So Dr. Craighead pointed out that three positions that we were approved in December town meeting were never filled. They were never able to fill it out. The elementary math interventionist, the high school science teacher, the middle school world language teacher. And just because they didn't fill it out doesn't mean that they don't still need it. It's more, it's in the middle of the school year, so a lot of teachers are already allocated to, already had positions. So it's hard to find the staffing. And so I think it's like cutting the rug, pulling the rug from under the schools to say, here, we give you this money for this. No, we're going to take it back. So in addition to these, they have identified some more positions to address the gaps in learning specifically, the elementary reading specialist, middle school guidance counselor, and high school special education teacher. But I know that part of thinking is that making these cuts is around the possibility that we're going to get these American Rescue funds. But one, we don't know when that will be. If we want our schools to be able to hire these specialists, I think, to help our kids, I think they need to have the funds now so that they can post them before the school year starts in order to have the best opportunity to find people to fill those positions. We also don't know how much we're going to get, so there's no guarantee that the amount that we get will cover the needs for these positions. And we don't know what restrictions are going to be on those positions when they come in. So we don't know if we're going to be allowed to use them for one or all the positions that we want. Basically, I'm making this because I think we have to make an investment in our children. But I know we don't typically pull from the stabilization funds, except for a crisis. But I think that what we went through in the past year counts as a crisis. And waiting to see what happens with them for the next year, I don't think is an option when it comes to our kids. The longer we wait to address the gaps in learning, the more of a toll will be on our kids, and the more expensive it's going to be down the line in order to correctly address this. So I hope that you all will support this and help us to proactively help our kids right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I see about eight hands raised. Mr. Walker, Rick Adeli, O'Halloran, Campbell Malone, Lessing, McNeil, Friedman-Hennan, Skepers, and Posar, if I'm pronouncing it right. So we'll start with Mr. Walker. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Well, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Asher and the select board. So let me just pose those first, and then I'll talk a little bit more about this particular request to amend the Article 5. The question for Mr. Asher is, he said that public safety was essentially flat, but my recollection of the vote that this body took in earlier this year was that we reduced the police department staffing by two positions. So the first question is, is that correct? And if that's correct, then I wouldn't say public safety is flat. The second question is for the select board and the town administrator, or perhaps the school committee. I know that select board member Tom Hurley, and then subsequently, member Zulus, did a fair amount of work on negotiating some plan design changes to our health insurance plans that were supposed to yield some savings. So the question is, did we realize those savings and have those essentially been eaten up by the increases? And then the second question, perhaps for the town administrator or the select board, is we had a number of benefits consultants who were supposed to be advising us, so it should not be a surprise that one of the budget busters is increasing health insurance costs, because that's been the case at least for the last decade. So what's the plan for addressing that? And then, with regard to the schools, this is a very, very difficult discussion and a motion to make on the floor at town meeting at the end of a budget process that started probably in October of last year. And as I understand it, there were a number of discussions, probably eight or nine, maybe more, between the school committee, finance committee, and the select board, finance committee, the town administrator, and the warrant committee. So I believe that as town meeting members, we have to trust the process. Unless you're willing, those are all open meetings, so unless you're willing to try to get to as many of those open meetings as possible, I think we really have to trust the process and trust that this negotiated agreement, which was the motion from the select board, represents the best judgment of the warrant committee, the school committee, finance committee, and the select board. If you assume that's not true, then we have to talk about the school committee budget in the broader context. It's not simply, and I, as member Matthews said, no one can argue with investing in our children. And I've certainly been an advocate for that during my time on the school committee and always as a town meeting member. But the school committee budget is probably the second most complex budget that the town has. And that's because, because it's a bottom-line budget, you don't get to see most of the intricacies unless you've been a member of the school committee or a very astute student on the warrant committee. Specifically, there are a number of different reserves that the school budget has that offer specific purposes but could be used to offset certain costs and expenses. There's a circuit breaker fund, and it would be helpful to know what the balance is in that fund. There's Medicare. There's a staff exchange savings that we get when we hire younger teachers after older, higher-paid teachers have retired. So it'd be helpful to know what the staff exchange savings were for fiscal '20 and what you anticipate those to be for fiscal '21. But also, you need to talk about the school committee salary structure, which is not unusual for a school department, but it is one where, if you're on the step structure, and my guess is that about 40% of the staff still are, and correct me if I'm wrong there, but for those 40%, they're averaging salary increases of between 5% to 7%. So that's the 2% cost of living, plus an additional step increase of anywhere from 3% to 6%. So it could be as high as 8%, it could be as low as 5%. But that's an additional cost, and as I said, that's the traditional model. But that creates expenses that are hard to get around. So in a 40-plus-million-dollar budget, it would be helpful to see or to know what the efficiencies are that the schools have tried to achieve. But the point here is that it's just really difficult to say, yes, let's add more money, unless you're going to talk about the broader context, and it's very late to do that. So I would be opposed to any additional funding there, simply because I haven't attended all of those meetings, and I have to trust that the school committee, finance committee, the select board, and the warrant committee have done their due diligence, and that this is the best solution for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. If you stand by, I'll take, you had a question for Chair Asher, the select board, and then town administrator, select board. I'll take your last comments about the school committee's, not his questions, but his observations.
Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Mr. Walker, thank you for your question. On page one of the warrant, for public safety, as you know, includes both the fire and the police, and the allocation, the recommended allocation that we are, that the warrant committee came up with, was for fiscal year '22 to be $14,642,771 compared to $14,527,125,000, effectively flat. We achieved that by not filling two police positions. You're exactly right. And by reducing, by the departments reducing other expenses so that we would have achieved the numbers that we achieved. So you're exactly right on that there were two positions in the police department that were not filled and that there were other reductions made. And as you can see in Article 5, fire overtime is supplementing by $125,000 and police salaries by $130,000, which is how we get to effectively flat, because the department chairs, Chief King and Chief, new Chief Madden, were really sharpening their pencils on this one. And again, and thank you for pointing out that the decisions that we come to are made with exceedingly deep analysis, many, many, many hours, working collectively with the select board, with the school committee finance, finance of the school committee and the finance subcommittee of the select board, so that the warrant committee has kicked these tires so much that we've broken our ankles. So there has been an enormous amount of work that's gone into this. Obviously, it is the decision of town meeting, but we have tried to distill out as much emotion as possible and still tried to address the needs of the town in its entirety. Nobody at all is denying that these needs exist in the school, but it's a question of priority and making sure that all services are, and all departments of town are given an appropriate look.
Right. Mr. Moderator, just one clarification.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
But with the schools, I did have some specific questions. What's the balance in the circuit breaker fund? What's the balance in Medicare? And what were the savings in fiscal '20 from staff exchange? And what's the anticipated savings in fiscal '21, staff exchange?
Got it.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll go to the second question, the select board. Ms. Collins, would you like to speak or redirect?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I would like to say, add my voice to the need for some balance. And if all these departmental needs were to be funded again, it would lead us to a difficult place next year, likely having to have layoffs. And I would like to have Mr. Dennehy answer Mr. Walker's questions about the healthcare increase and what the plan... about the healthcare increase and what the plan is for addressing healthcare. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Madam Chair. Yeah, so to answer Mr. Walker's question, two years ago, the town sat down, we put a committee together with with the Unions in town to do a healthcare redesign. It took several months to do it. It was very collegial. We were successful in renegotiating that healthcare design plan. It runs through the end of the collective bargaining agreements, June 30, 2022. The long and short of it is this year, as many of you know, or perhaps experienced, elective surgeries were not part of 2020 due to COVID and some of the limitations and restrictions in our hospitals. The town is receiving almost $250,000 back from our two insurance carriers for fiscal year 21, which should fall to free cash because elective surgeries did not take place. Having said that, the industry is picking up on this trend that people will start heading back to the hospitals and getting these elective surgeries so that there is an increase. But had this, the Select Board not sat down with the Unions and come up with a very viable solution to this ever-expanding cost, it, it can be a budget buster. And the number that Chair Asher described, the 14%, is a going concern, but just know that the Select Board and the Unions did sit down and had very good conversations about that and know that the 5% increase we're looking at this year would have been much more significant. So we are trying to mitigate that cost. We do have employees that utilize both the family plan and the individual plan. Part of that healthcare redesign was an opt-out where we would take individuals who had two or more years on the health plan and we would buy them out for an individual. It costs roughly $10,000 a year for the, for the health plan and about $20,000 a year for the family plan. We offered a $2,500 annual buyout and a $5,000 annual buyout respectively. We did see a significant amount of savings from that where people chose to opt out of the town's group insurance plan and sign up privately or with with their spouse or significant others. So we did see a savings with that. Additionally, some of you may recall, there was a $320,000 savings with the retiree prescription carve-out that my board, the Select Board unanimously approved in February. And ATA HR Director Paige Appolito is working with all our retirees and Cook &amp; Company, our consultants, to work through that process with our retirees so that they understand that there's actually savings on their end as well. So as much as we would like group insurance to stay flat every year, we, we understand that, you know, 5% is the number this year, but it could have been significantly higher. Mr. Walker, I hope I answered your question, but would entertain any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Dr. Craig, I still see your hand up. I was gonna recognize Assistant Superintendent Dexter for those financial questions unless you had some answers first. Nope, I see the hand is down. Okay, with that, I'll recognize Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Ms. Dexter?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So I'd just like to address the question related to the balance in the Circuit Breaker account. There's a balance as of June 30, 2020 of approximately $1.5 million. But it's important to note that throughout the school budget, we have taken into account charge-offs to the Circuit Breaker for sped expenses. That's the only type of expenses that are allowed to be charged off to Circuit Breaker. They have already been reflected in the budget request as well as charge-offs to other revolving funds in the Medicare account that Mr. Walker spoke about.
Did you have the other, the staff exchange fund, FY 20 and 21 numbers?
I do not have that with me tonight.
Okay. And you mentioned Medicare. Did you have that balance for Mr. Walker?
At June 30 of 2020, that balance was approximately $390,000. But as I mentioned earlier, any charge-offs have already been reflected in the budget request, meaning we've already taken deductions for things we expect to pay out of those funds.
Understood. Thank you. With that, I see your next request is from Ms. Ricardelli. I believe, ma'am, you're a Newtown Meeting Member. If you could remember to state your name and precinct for the audience.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Ricardella. I'm with Precinct 3. Happy to be here for the first time. Wanted to quickly echo what Town Meeting Member Walker said about the process and trusting the process. Like him, I wasn't able to follow every conversation about the budget process for this year, but I did follow the last Warrant Committee meeting and have been following the developments in the Town Paper. And I feel that the conversation has been thoroughly vetted and that the School Committee did not bring new information to this conversation here tonight. So I would say that, like him and like others here tonight, I would encourage my fellow Town Meeting Members to trust that due diligence has been done. Second, I would like to say, like Town Meeting Member Matthews, I also believe that we have quite an investment to make in our children coming up. I have spent the past six months advocating for our children and requesting that the School Committee pay attention to both the mental health and learning loss that was happening over the past year. The School Committee, over the past months, have said that mental health issues were anecdotal and that children were on track in both the remote and hybrid models. It comes as quite a shock then to me to hear that, in fact, the needs of our children are quite dire, both on the mental health aspect and the learning loss aspect. I would say then that these positions that are recommended seem, quite frankly, far too low for what will probably be needed and what parents have been asking for for several months. So I would say that before the town grants further stabilization funds, that the School Committee present a full workup of student testing scores, how they compare to previous years, any mental health assessments that have been done, and a plan, a three- to five-year plan for catching our children up. And then we can have a full assessment of what is truly needed to catch our children up from a devastating year of learning loss. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Halloran. Mr. O'Halloran, I believe you're also a Newtown Meeting Member. If you can remember to state your name and precinct. You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian O'Halloran, Precinct 3. I have a question for Dr. Asher. In the town, the taxpayers pay a certain percentage of the insurance premiums for employees and and the employees pay the remainder. It's also true in private industry here in the Boston area. Can, can you compare and contrast the differences or characterize the differences between the percent employees pay in the town versus what you might expect to see in private industry in the area? Thank you.
Mr. Asher, do you have that information or might that be something for the Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I think, Mr. Dennehy, you might have that answer for us.
Yes, Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so prior to my arrival in town, at a previous sit-down with the Unions regarding healthcare redesign, the Select Board and the Unions came to an agreement that 80%, 20% in fiscal year 16 would be the percentage of breakdown. So the taxpayers would pay 80% and the employee, employee would pay 20. That went to 78, 22, and it now sits currently at 76, 24, which it has been for the last three fiscal years, I believe. We, there was a question that came around earlier this week regarding the breakdown of it. That is consistent with with many municipalities. I'm not sure about the private sector. There are other municipalities that are 90-10 and even others that are 50-50. But for the most part, 75-25 seems to be the split in Greater Boston.
Thank you, sir. With that, I see, I'll just read the names of the folks whose hands are up. We have Ms. Campbell Malone, Mr. Lessing, Mr. McNeil, Ms. Freeman Hannah, Ms. McConney Skippers, Ms. Posar, Mr. Fahey, Dr. Christensen, and Ms. Agostino. So we'll go with Ms. Campbell Malone, you're recognized.
Thank you, Newtown Meeting Member Regina Campbell Malone, Precinct 1.
If you could speak a little louder, ma'am?
Sure. Is that any better?
That's better, thank you.
Great, great, thank you. I'm a Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member and school teacher and mother to a Tupper Tiger. And I can't express enough how much reading specialists changed my second child's life with single-handedly being responsible for getting my second child to read despite the fact that both of her parents are teachers. And as Doc Matthews mentioned, he sung the praises of a math specialist helping his daughter find success in math. And I, I just sit back and reflect on the fact that many of the points that we are missing in terms of being compliant are pre-pandemic assessments of the recommended adult-to-student ratio when it comes to special ed, guidance counselor positions, and the fact that five of our six schools are above the recommended ratio when it comes to nursing. And in a normal year, that's unfathomable. But to me, in a post-pandemic year, that is also a mental health pressure cooker and one with equity and social justice are at the center of the work that so many Americans are committing themselves to. Doing anything that doesn't support the mental, physical, social, emotional, and special education needs of our children would make us negligent in our duties to do what's right, do what's just and necessary for the most vulnerable species in our community. And so I will propose that we actually amend the line item for the school, not just the 871,000, but to the full 928,600 that was actually requested, including the the removed or cut position from the school, public school budget. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell Malone. The way our process works is we can address one amendment and motion on the floor at a time. So for your request to be honored, we'd refer back to Mr. Matthews, who made the motion. And he would have to decide if he wants to accept that as a friendly amendment, meaning agree to your increased request. So just so I can do that, can you just repeat clearly what you would like the line item school to read?
Sure, the original request was for 928,600, I believe.
928,600? Okay. And so that would bring, you then want to modify the total? Let me get my calculator. So we would go from 800 plus 928,600? A total of 1,728,600. So I'll now recognize Mr. Matthews. There's been a request, the only request we can honor would be a friendly amendment to your motion. Do you accept that friendly amendment or reject it? It's really your purview.
While, while I appreciate the, the the attempt, and I do think the schools need even more to handle some of the other things, I'm gonna say no at this point in time because I think that they, this is about as much as they want. And I do hear what the, our other committees and boards were saying about not dipping as much into the stabilization fund. Wanted to dip as much as needed in order to invest in our children.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Campbell Malone, so for the moment, we're unable to go accommodate your friendly request for a friendly amendment. So do you have any other comments you'd like to make about this article? Are you finished?
No, that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll proceed to Mr. Lessing, you're recognized.
Good evening, and this is Lessing, Precinct 8. I rise to support the amendment by Mr. Matthews to increase the withdrawal of the stabilization funds for schools. There's a couple of points that I want to make. The first is that this was not a normal year. So I think it's incredibly difficult to attend open meetings, especially if the kids are home, et cetera. Second, as, as I understood, it was a split vote. And if that is the case, I believe that we, as a Town Meeting, should serve as a tiebreaker based on everything that we are hearing. And since the stabilization fund is intended to be for a rainy day, if this year was a year-long category five hurricane, this is exactly the reason that we should be using these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll go to Ms. Friedman Hannah. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, Karen Friedman Hannah, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I rise similarly to Town Meeting Member Lessing, very similarly in thought that with a split vote from the Warrant Committee, that tells us that this was not straight-out recommendation that was bought into by the entire Warrant Committee, that that was enough money for what was needed. That should tell us something. And the idea that it is basically being looked at like salt in a winter with snow removal, that if you don't use it in one year, you don't really need it the next year, is kind of an absurdity, even though that wasn't one of the analogies that was said. That's how I'm taking it. I find it that this is the most crucial time to step up what the services are in the schools. It, I've been in touch as a therapist with people who work at Children's Hospital, who are saying the amount of kids in crisis on a daily basis has been growing and growing and growing. And the idea that we are cutting services potentially rather than reinforcing services within our schools is actually pretty appalling to me. I'm just, I, I don't understand how we can even be thinking it. I know that the budget is important. I know that fiscal responsibility is important. But I also know that we've never in our lifetimes lived through a pandemic like this and with the effects that it is having on not only the students, but the teachers. And I think that we must step up to meet what the basic needs are. I would have loved it to have been more, but I understand the need to, again, keep it as fiscally responsible as possible. But if the school system is telling you that this is the basic needs that they must have to provide the services that our students need, that is what we have the responsibility of doing above all else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd now like to recognize Ms. Collins, the Chair of the Select Board. I think you wanted to speak to this motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. I just wanted to speak to the federal relief programs under the American Rescue Plan. Monies are designed to help deal with the academic, so, social and emotional effects of the pandemic. The funds, some of them should be coming in July. Others will be coming in, in the following year. But directly, the schools should be getting $970,000 from the federal government. The governor announced an additional $70 million for summer programs. And the town will be getting $2.7 million. And as the town shared CARES funds with the schools, so do I expect that to happen again. Also, there's been a grant that's been promised through Rep. Ayana Presley's office that was put forward for diagnostic resources for math and reading that, that the School Committee has said or Administration has said. or administration has said, have worked really well in tracking progress this year. And that's about 116,000, although I think they've reduced the ask because they went back and looked at the budget. So there are, there are funds that are, that are coming. And they are to be devoted to just these things that have been caused by the pandemic. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, recognize Ms. McConney Schippers. Ma'am, you're recognized. I'm part of Schippers. Let me get the name right. If you could unmute.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Angela McConney Schippers, Precinct 1. I rise in support of Mr. Matthews' amendment to Article 5, appropriate additional funds from the stabilization fund to fund some of the positions as described in Article 26. Mr. Matthews has been very eloquent, so have all the following speakers. And I apologize if I am redundant. I acknowledge that the funding, as it stands, was a difficult decision for the warrant committee, and we thank them for all their help. We do know that time is of the essence due to the hiring schedule and the fact that we're coming off a pandemic and that we also weren't able to fill those three positions as approved by Town Meeting in December of 2020. As Chair Collins just said, and as noted in the comments, it is possible that some of these funds will be replenished from the American Rescue Plan Act. In the meantime, however, let us remember the purpose of the stabilization fund. If for once in a century pandemic doesn't qualify as an emergency, I don't know what will. Our schoolchildren have missed critical in-person instruction, which is crucial to their academic development. And we just need to do all we can to get them up to speed. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I see a few of our town officials. Ms. Dexter, is your hand still raised from before, or do you have a new point?
I have a new point, please.
Please, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to make a follow-up comment regarding the American Rescue Plan, as well as the additional funds which are under the ESER program, which is Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief. Those funds are intended to help the school get through the period through September of '23, I believe, possibly '24. We have not yet received those. We do have plans for those through other programs, such as we identified in the presentation to try to support with some part-time nursing, as well as some summer programs and additional programs throughout the regular school year to assist with the learning loss. One thing to note, when you use federal funds to pay salaries, you have to pay a 9% surcharge to the mass teachers' retirement system. So it becomes very costly to pay full-time employees through that. These, these needs, we need to know now on the funding. If we wait till we have a better understanding of when the American Rescue Plan comes through, as well as the ESER funds, we will lose out on the opportunity to recruit for next school year, similar to the positions we received in December.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I'll take a couple other from the Town Meeting Members, then Mr. Asher will come back to you. Recognize Ms. Posar, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Hi, yes, that's pronounced correctly. Thank you.
Could you give us your name and precinct, please?
Yep, sure. This is Rachel Posar, Precinct 8. And like so many others, I'm speaking up to urge my fellow Town Meeting Members to support the request to amend Article 5. First, I'd like to point out that in the opening statement to the warrant, the note suggests that meeting the school's needs will result in depletion of the stabilization fund. And personally, I found that to be a bit of an overstatement. If you calculate it out, the withdrawal that's currently proposed by the warrant committee represents 17% of the stabilization fund's balance. If this amendment is adopted, the withdrawal will represent 26% of the fund's balance. Close to three-quarters of the fund will remain in place, and they can be replenished over the next several years, as was initially the plan. And perhaps they could be replenished even more quickly if federal funding comes through. But more importantly, as so many others have suggested, our schools are in the process of recovering from what we hope is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. Student learning was disrupted for over a year, and assessments that were recently conducted by the district suggest a sizable proportion of students will need additional academic support to perform at grade level moving forward. Our schools were already coping with overcrowding prior to the pandemic. And the three positions that this body voted to fund in December were needed prior to the pandemic. But to cut a math specialist when there's already evidence of a math deficit among students seems incredibly short-sighted. If the goal here is to think long-term, we should also consider the long-term implications and expense of choosing not to provide the schools with the resources they need to bring students back to performing at grade level as soon as possible. You know, I don't know how expensive remediation is, but I am assuming that in this case, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound, a pound of cure. You know, and I think that we all recognize that dipping into the stabilization fund isn't a sustainable solution. But our kids really need these positions this year so that they don't fall further behind. We need to begin the hiring process now and not in July, when the well-qualified educators already have positions. You know, I think that this represents the very definition of an unexpected necessity, which is what the stabilization fund is for. And, you know, in regards to the school's budget in comparison to that of other town departments, the schools have been impacted by the pandemic in a way that no other town department has been impacted, and their allocation should reflect that. So again, I urge you to support this amendment. Thanks so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And then next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Fahey. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct 9. I'm now entering my seventh year as a Town Meeting Member. And my recollection of my previous six years is that every year, this has been a significant topic of discussion. And it's obviously something that's very important to all of us. However, this year, I feel, and obviously we're in a pandemic, that the intensity is rising on this particular topic. And it has risen, as I recall, from my first year to where I am today. I am not in favor of modifying this Article 5. I do agree with Mr. Walker that, at this point, this has been substantially vetted in what is submitted as part of the warrant here is something that we should approve. I might have, you know, a listening problem, but I actually heard two different things, I think. I believe what Mr. Asher had said is that we have a spending problem. I believe what Ms. Craig had said is we have a revenue problem. Those are very distinctly different. And if my math is correct on this, we have gone from a $44 million school budget in '17 to a $54 million school budget in '21, which is a $10 million increase and a 22% over four years. If we stay on that path, we'll go from $54 million this year to $66 million in '25. It seems to me that this is unsustainable in that we have a significant problem that we have to deal with. And I don't know that I would say that we're kicking the can down the road. But when I read page 17 in a draw of attention for the Town Meeting Members to this particular part of the Warrant Committee report, and it reads, this is the paragraph at the bottom of the page, or second paragraph to the bottom of the page. "For several years, the Warrant Committee has recommended to the town that it develop a five-year financial plan." It reads on, "Such a plan should include strategies for expanding the tax base beyond its current dependence on residential tax levy, et cetera, et cetera." And my question for, I guess it would be for Mr. Asher. And this is the same type of narrative that's been in the Warrant Committee's report year after year. What are we doing about this? If this, if this is written, and it is in fact what's been said, for several years, the Warrant Committee has recommended to the town that it develop a five-year financial plan. I would like to know from someone, possibly Mr. Dennehy or someone else, what is it that we've done about it? And if we haven't done anything about it, why aren't we doing something about it? And when are we going to do something about it? So if I could have an answer to that particular question, I would appreciate it.
Can do. I think Mr. Dennehy or Ms. Collins, this may be in your purview.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Thank you for the question, Mr. Fahey. Yes, this is, this is a resounding theme. We have been addressing this. If you recall, two years ago, the town received a grant from the Community Compact. At the bottom of the town's webpage is the CLER.gov. Basically, it's a financial snapshot of the town. That is an N-plus-two model. So in order to come up with a five-year plan, then-town accountant Amy Dexter had to upload seven years' worth of information. So there is information there that talks about the town's finances. More specifically, we worked with the Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue this year, Jared Curtis, who's our representative. They did a financial forecast for us. It was received in late October. We haven't had a chance to put our arms around it, what with the budget process, and transition both at Milton Public Schools and in the Accounting Department at Town Hall. But we have a draft document that supports a five-year financial forecast for the town, which we will be reviewing shortly after Town Meeting. So it is a work in progress. We're working on multiple fronts with this. We do thank DOR for their support as professional local services and A&amp;F experts, and know that Director of Finance Karen Preval and officials, department heads throughout the town will be looking at this closely. The first glance back in October, one of the numbers didn't look correct. So then-town accountant Amy Dexter wanted to kind of hit pause on it. And quite honestly, we haven't gotten to it with all the budget discussions and everything that's been going on. But Mr. Fahey and all Town Meeting Members and anyone viewing tonight know that we do have a document in draft form that we're working on with Mass Department of Revenue.
Mr. Moderator, if I could just ask Mr. Dennehy a question.
Please.
Can you, Mr. Dennehy, could you forecast for us when this plan, or forecast for us what the development of this plan will be? Is this something that, that you think requires six months, nine months, three months? I happen to be of the opinion that this is an incredibly important matter to the town. Right now, we're talking about the schools, but quite honestly, you know, every, every single department in the town is, is dependent on a good financial management of our town. And I know you don't want to be in the position, nor does the Warrant Committee of saying no. But if we don't gain financial control of our town, we're going to have a significant problem. And that's probably more in the near term than in the long term. So can you forecast for us the timeline that you think you're on with this financial plan?
So I'm confident that we could have this report to release at Special Town Meeting in October. Understanding that a lot of the revenue stuff, Director of Finance Preval and Treasurer McAuliffe and others in town that do forecasting for us from the revenue side are still working through some of the COVID stuff. Obviously, the town of Milton, I've said it several times, what is our curse? Which is the fact that we're very revenue-restricted, actually may be a blessing as we come out of COVID. We only anticipate budget for $200,000 worth of meals tax. So we're not looking at the problems that you see in the Norwoods and the Westwoods and all these places that depend on hotel tax and meals tax. I can't imagine what the city of Boston is looking at for revenue shortfall. So we are working through revenue predictions, but I'm confident that this is something that we could present to Town Meeting in October.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you.
A member has asked me a, I'll take it as a point-of-order question. Is this request for an update in the five-year plan pertinent to the motion to amend? I think since the members are questioning the rationale for the motion to go into the stabilization fund, I'm providing some leeway on this, since we are talking about financial matters and the budget matters an important fund. So that's why I'm providing leeway for the members here tonight. Just one request, Ms. McConney Schippers, if you could just lower your hand. It still looks like it's raised, and Mr. Fahey yourself as well. Next, we go to Dr. Christensen. I think you are next.
Hi, Cindy Christensen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. My question is for Mr. Dennehy. I thought earlier I heard him say something about a refund from the insurance, health insurance, because of elective surgery. My question is, does the health insurance policy that we offer town employees cover elective surgery? The reason I'm asking is I've never had coverage for elective surgery, and I find it quite amazing that, that we offer that to our employees. But maybe I heard him wrong.
Well, by the way, Mr. Christensen, this does now get into the weeds of our health insurance somewhat. But Mr. Dennehy, if you'll answer the question, and folks, if we can try to stick back to the merits of going into the stabilization fund. And Mr. Dennehy?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question, Dr. Christensen. Yes, there is elective surgeries, not all of them. The town has two insurance carriers, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Harvard Pilgrim. There is a matrix of fees that are covered by each of these health insurance plans, which we could provide to you if you would like them.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Dr. Craighead, I still see your hand up. Have you been waiting to speak, or is it a lingering hand?
I have been waiting to speak. Thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to address something that Mr. Walker said a while ago and that Mr. Fahey picked up on, and that is the idea of trusting the process. We do, in the school committee, trust the process. We were part of the process when we met very regularly with the Select Board Finance Subcommittee throughout the fall, when we presented to the Warrant Committee a couple of times, and when we then presented to the Warrant Committee at their last couple of meetings. We were asked along the way to make cuts that we could not, in all good conscience, agree to. So our last option was to bring this to Town Meeting. And with all due respect, this is part of the process and the most important part of the process. And that is that the Town Meeting Members get to decide what to do here with the stabilization fund, but also with all of the budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I'll go to Ms. Agostino. You're recognized, ma'am.
Good evening, Diane DiTullio Agostino, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. We have wandered here and there. So, Mr. Moderator, I'm going to go back to the beginning when the school committee made their presentation. And the school committee specifically stated that they are not asking for this increase. The school department, many years ago, and there's at least 39 years that I've gone through every town meeting except for one due to the death in the family. The school department, many years ago, made the decision to go to a one-line budget. That one-line budget really is the reason that many Town Meeting Members and many voters, when there's an override, they question where is the money actually being spent? And it's almost as if that one-line budget is now coming back to haunt us as responsible people, Town Meeting Members, who want to give what our children need. Because they're, whether they're my own children or my neighbor's children, they are all our children. Milton was one of the first communities to have a public education system. And Milton was one of the first communities to have a public edu- education system. And yet, the school committee did not ask for this increase. And, um, my friend there, who did ask for the increase, very eloquently explained his concern, why he wanted it. We eloquently heard from Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, that there are additional funds coming for the schools and for children. But when you have a one-line budget, and it, it just happens that funds can be, shall we say, found in one location and used in another. I've listened to many parents through the recent elections. Some really upset with the way some funds have been spent, and others who have younger children, much younger children, pretty much questioning, so how does this system work? And yet, with a one-line budget, we don't really get into the weeds of that budget. So taking from what Mr. Fahey pointed out, I think it was Mr. Fahey, that from 2017, the school budget went from 44 million, I believe he said, to 54 million in 2021. I want to go back to ask the question of the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Asher, if you would, Mr. Moderator. Um, it came up that we've had 16 overrides. I'd like to know what analysis the Warrant Committee has done on the overrides that the residents have approved? Because before we ever, and I recall speaking at a town meeting probably 30 years ago, when the stabilization fund had zero dollars in it, we have really worked, the town meeting members have worked very hard to make sure that our bond rating, as Mr. Asher said, is AAA, and that we do have a great stabilization fund. So I'd really like more details on the overrides, because also included in this question, although not directly impacted by this amendment, would be the fact that we all know we need enough of school building. So how would this impact the bond rating for that school building? We know that we're building fire stations. How would taking this extra funding from the stabilization fund impact the bond rating? And I don't care how low rates are. I, I mean, as a financial planner, every quarter of a percent is important. If you really want to get at doing a financial plan for the town, you look at every quarter of a percent. You look at where else is money gonna be coming from? Where else is it gonna be available? And I can understand, having spent four years on the Warrant Committee, why they might have had a split vote on this, but that the majority did feel that the need wasn't there. And we also, as I want to emphasize again, I've probably said it three times, the school committee is not asking for the increase. They didn't ask for the increase. Um, it doesn't sound like they even took a vote. So we've had 16 overrides, and yet I'm looking at it thinking back in 2017, we voted to hire two police officers that someone in the discussion already pointed out, and I forget who it was, that they're no longer included in the budget. So have we done an analysis of these overrides? Uh, the voters who are passing the overrides in our current budget, getting what they supported through those overrides? Because a $10 million increase in such a short amount of time for the school department with a one-line budget, um, where we know, you know, other towns did things differently during COVID. They did things differently in order to be prepared for when the schools were gonna be going back by saving funds. And Milton didn't do those. The Milton School System did not do. I don't want to get into exactly, but the town of Brookline took some very important steps that Milton didn't do. And I certainly don't want our children to suffer for it. But, Mr. Moderator, I would like a response from the Chair of the Warrant Committee to that overall concern about the one-line budget, the override money, and why he feels that it was such a close vote on the Warrant Committee. Thank you.
So, Ms. Agostino, um, I think a couple of those questions are getting outside the bounds of this motion to amend. But what I did hear is how does, um, increasing, uh, taking additional funds from the stabilization affect rates? And I think your last question, what was the very last thing you asked? Oh, the, uh, Warrant Committee vote.
Well, just, just to reply, everything I brought up was in relationship to the discussions that I took notes on during this, um, request. Starting with from the school committee's first presentation that they weren't gonna make the request, and then going into the, um, town meeting member who made the request. Every note I've taken has been during the discussion.
Um, yes, I, just to be process specific, uh, their presentation was before the motion to amend. And it is 10:25 here, so tell you what, um, why don't we get to Mr. Asher? Could you start with a few things? Uh, how does stabilization affect, uh, rates, uh, the Warrant Committee, um, vote? And if you can answer very quickly, analysis on, uh, overrides, Mr. Asher, you're recognized.
I'm here. Um, am I unmuted?
You, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Um, well, uh, Diane, your questions are all very good. First question, uh, and immediately to the concept of the override, uh, I'm sorry, to the stabilization fund first. Uh, it was brought up that if we do this motion, uh, adopt this motion, uh, the stabilization fund will drop by 26%. Uh, that's true. It will. How would that affect a AAA bond rating? In concert with the fire station building program and the potential for a new school, it would likely be looked at negatively by the rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. How negatively is a question of how rapidly the debt is going to be paid off and how offsetting any overrides would be in this case? To your next question about the overrides, I would refer you to my observations about the override uh, since 1983, when Milton did 20, has done 25 property tax overrides, of which 16 were successful, uh, of which nine passed with fewer than 300 votes. Those were largely off-cycle, um, uh, votes that were timed, I believe. And if I were a cynical person, I'd say they were timed so that a majority of people really wouldn't know what they were going to be, uh, getting hit with by an increase and what the purpose of it was. The majority of the rises, uh, in overrides have been for, uh, either construction projects, debt service, or other, uh, capital needs of the town, or in fact, to pay for increases in, um, operating costs for the town. Now, if we go further on that point, I can address a couple of things that were also made, uh, or, or points that were made about, uh, the funding for these positions. And nobody is doubting that the school department is a deserving, uh, place for money to go and that our kids, uh, should be our priority. However, I do want to underscore several points. First off, um, if we use this money, one-time money from stabilization for these ongoing needs, these are positions that are being funded year in and year out. We don't, it's not a question of finding the money this year. If we take it out of stabilization, it's there. How would we pay for it? Two years, three years, five years down the road? Uh, I have, uh, to Diane Agostino's question, we have looked at what the town's costs are in educational expenditures, actual total expenditures for budgetary amounts for salaries alone in the school department. In 2012, total 34.7, 34.8 million dollars. If we approve this budget, uh, as presented without this allocation from stabilization, the, um, uh, total expenditures for, um, I'm sorry, school salaries and wages, I'm sorry, I was looking at the, the school salaries and wages in 2017 were 27,801,000 dollars. If we approve this budget, the salaries, school salaries and wages projected in, um, uh, fiscal year, uh, right now for fiscal year 2021 are 43,870,000 dollars. So in, in, uh, since 2012, school salaries have increased from 27 million to 43 million dollars. Okay, that's a $16 million increase in 10 years. Um, and that's a lot of the result of cost of living increases, uh, the addition of new positions. So there are a lot of things that go in it, but the reality is the number is growing rapidly. We don't see that, uh, in the town budget, because it is, as Diane pointed out, a line item that then goes to the school committee, which can be allocated any way they want. The long-term implications of this for our bond rating are negative, very simply negative. Now, we can assume that, uh, going from AAA to AA will cost the town more in interest costs, and with interest rates being so low, this is a negligible point. However, it's something we still have to consider, because year in and year out, we're looking at cost of living increases for the, uh, employees of the town. And I just simply raise a point that in, uh, if you're running your own business, as many of us do, or if you're an employee of a for-profit organization, um, cost of living increases are not foregone conclusions. You don't just get it because you show up for work and you're, you know, you, you put a mirror up to your lips and there's warm breath that comes through. Um, and I'm not saying that happens at the school department, but I'm just saying, at some point, the, the realities of limited revenues, uh, have to come into play when you're doing contract negotiations. So, um, you know, the, the idea that we have not looked at these going forward is, um, bringing me to my last point about the vote at the, um, Warrant Committee. Yes, it was a split vote. Many votes are split. It was, uh, a very, very deep and contentious discussion at some point. Um, and contentious in that we do have every point of the political spectrum and, um, you know, demographics, neighborhoods. Everybody's represented, but at the end of the day, the discussion came out, okay, fine, if we fund these positions today, we still have to fund them tomorrow and the next day and the next year and five years from now. And if we take it out of stabilization, yeah, sure, we're reducing it 26% now. But if we do that in three years' time and take it out of stabilization for this ongoing need, we'll, there'll be nothing left. We will have broken the piggy bank. Uh, and yeah, sure, we'll have wonderful, uh, services, but then at some point, we're gonna have to look at things that we have not done in this town, which the town administrator, the school committee, and the select board should be justifiably proud. The stewardship has managed to eliminate, uh, the possibility of layoffs. We have not laid anybody off, uh, and we've been able to maintain town services. So, uh, has the Warrant Committee looked at this way? Yes, we've looked at it. We've twisted ourselves into pretzel forms to figure out how to do this. And so, uh, for those of you who, who may have a question that we didn't look at this, I directed to our minutes and to go look at Milton X's cable. Yes, we have. And the, the ideas are great. We need to provide services to our students, but the reality is we still have to pay for them, not just this year. And finally, federal funding, uh, coming in may be able to pay for some of these positions, but, uh, one suggestion was made, when federal funding comes, maybe we can put it back into stabilization. It is unlikely that will happen, because federal funds are generally restricted as to use. I don't know that we can count on that for stabilization, which was again, a consideration that the Warrant Committee made. If in fact, we do have federal funding come in, we can fund these positions with that for the time being. Uh, it's not perfect, but we recognize that there is a need. The need exists for the students, and we're, we're sensitive to it. However, um, you know, the, the, the one-line item that we vote to the school department is used at their discretion, and we have no control over that. We can ask questions. We see the budget. But after a fashion, um, it is the town meeting's purview to do as it likes with stabilization, but the Warrant Committee was split on this.
Thank you, Mr. Asher.
Sorry for going on.
Okay. Um, by the way, folks, we have over 10 hands still raised at 10:30 at night. Uh, at three minutes of question and response, we're a half hour away before we even vote. I would like to, uh, ask the members to do the following. If you could, uh, organize your thoughts into a, a three-minute, um, question, um, and be brief, then, uh, I'd be, uh, I would be grateful. By the way, a point of order question has come up, uh, whether we can move the question. Um, within our bylaws, uh, moving the question means we limit speakers to, uh, speaking once, and we limit, uh, um, speaking time to five minutes. So, uh, we could go through that. If someone wants to make a motion, what I'm requesting is I'm gonna, I'm timing people on three minutes right now to see if we can accelerate a way through that, this process. Uh, and so why don't we try that? So I'll go to, uh, Ms. Shapiro. You're recognized.
Thank you. My name is Mary Shapiro, precinct one, town meeting member. Um, I'll be very brief. I speak in strong support of this amendment, um, this motion to amend. The schools have dealt with a lot this year and are continuing to deal with a lot of uncertainty going into the following school year. I, um, I think there is some uncertainty about the federal funding, um, that could come to the schools, and the timing of this would compromise what the schools could do in terms of addressing the needs that students have, um, students and families have within our community. The schools have done a lot this year to support our community through its food, um, service program to support community members, um, through organization of COVID testing. The schools have done a lot to pivot and to address needs of our community. And so I'm asking town meeting members to consider this in support of our schools as they work very diligently to responsibly utilize the funding that they get from the town for our children and for our community. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, I have had a, uh, point of order raised in the Q and A. Uh, member Jean Burns said, um, she would like to move the question. Uh, this does take precedence over the current motion on the table. Is there a second? And by the way, with the guidelines that anyone only speaks once, and I know, I don't, I try not to let members speak twice without everyone having spoken once, and it limits debate to five minutes. So is there a second in the, to the motion? There's a second from Mr. Doug Heine. Okay? Let me just, uh, check something briefly, and I'll be right back. Okay, I just checked my paperwork, and, uh, this is a, um, non-debatable motion to, uh, move the question. So we will put this to a vote, and, uh, this requires a two-thirds vote. So we're gonna vote on now is, um, limiting debate to five minutes and making sure that, uh, each speaker only speaks once. I'm gonna make an exception for questions that are posed to elected officials. I will let them speak as many times as their questions arise, but we're limiting members to just speaking once. So, uh, can we put the polling question up, please? And un mute the phones. All those in favor of the motion before the body to limit debate, uh, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And on the phones, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed on the phones? Thank you. We can mute. And we can close the poll. Uh, the motion passes 85% yes, 14% no, 1% abstain. That achieves, I declare a two-third vote. So we'll limit debate to, uh, from each member to five minutes, and each member speaks once. Uh, so with that, I'll return to our list. Uh, Ms. Labor, you're recognized.
Kathleen Labor, precinct six. Um, I've been a town meeting member for a long time, and I've watched a lot of, um, budget discussions. Basically, the school department gets a certain amount of money. They get to choose what positions they fund and which positions they don't fund. So I think putting up special positions here, like the math coordinator or math, um, person, is, is really disingenuous, because the school department gets the money and they can pick and choose how they spend it. I urge a no vote to reject. I urge a no vote to reject this amendment. We have a certain amount of money in the stabilization fund and it's there for a reason. There has been a pandemic. There has been a lot of need, but we need to give the schools the money that was agreed upon in discussions with the warrant committee. Thank you.
Thank you. That was 44 seconds. Next, we'll go to Mr. Ebon. You're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I rise in support of town meeting member Matt's amendment to article five. I believe we do, if we don't use the stabilization fund for our kids at this time, then maybe we're not using it wisely. I understand the need for us to reduce spend, but do not think that we should do that at the expense of our kids' education. I've heard many town meeting members focus on the increase in the school budget, but may I also mention that over that same period of time, there's been significant increase in the services and the number of school students enrolled. So we have to look at this as a balanced issue. I also see this as a timing problem. So if we wait for the American Rescue Plan funds to come in, we would have lost the opportunity to hire the best for our kids. Is that really what we want to do? I strongly request that my fellow town meeting members support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just pause for a moment. We'll proceed to Mr. Donahue. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Kevin Donahue, town meeting member precinct three. I support this amendment. I think the idea of if not now, then when has been covered by others. I agree with it. So for the sake of time, I'm going to concentrate on several other points. Former speakers are indeed correct. This was far from a normal year and it was a very polite, but extremely contentious budget discussion. And to quote select board member Zulus, "The town budget is decided on the town meeting floor." I urge you all to exercise that final authority. So what are the long-term ramifications on the stabilization fund if we do not use this money now? Paradoxically, I worry it will be a long-term detriment to the stabilization fund. I fully intend to support repaying the amount of principal withdrawn from the stabilization fund last fiscal year and this fiscal year. But after that, what? In fiscal year, 2031 or whenever, we've repaid the principal, we removed. What happens when we are asked to make a subsequent deposit? There will be unfunded municipal needs as always. And I'm worried there will be extensive reasonable discussion on the floor of town meeting about making this hypothetical future deposit instead of funding those municipal needs. When you have a once in a multi-generational event and then you don't use the funding mechanism you've set up, there will, I think, be questions about the utility of continuing to fund that mechanism. Point two, there has been a focus on the bond rating and the negative effect this amendment may have on it. The balance of the stabilization fund is only one factor in the calculus for the rating agencies. Other important factors include maintaining municipal services, which is part of what this amendment does. Three of the requested positions here would be restored cuts to the school department. Point three, if you accept the supposition that the bond rating will suffer, which I do not necessarily do, I'm not sure I want to trade the better rating for reduced municipal services. It's like being house poor, getting the biggest house possible, but you end up using your packing boxes as furniture. And lastly, if those left brain points don't sway you, let me just say that I am not willing to use the crisis of the past 14 months as leverage to advance my pragmatic fiscal conservatism. That probably makes me a bad politician. But when I look at the pain and the anguish in the faces of the parents and guardians that I've talked to this year, my neighbors, my friends, and I listen to the pleas they've made for further resources in the schools, this lunge, parry and repose on economic matters when we have the resources available seems small. This year, I'll take a pass and I'll pick up the debate in town meeting in 2022. In conclusion, thank you. Please support the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Next, we recognize Ms. Varela. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, town moderator. Sheila Varela, town meeting member precinct eight. If I'll also echo what Dr. Donahue just spoke to, as two former members of the school committee serving together over the past six years. Everything he spoke to is the truth. And I also wanted to.
Ms. Varela, we lost your voice.
Can you hear me now?
You're fading in and out. I think you're moving away from the mic perhaps. I can't hear you now. Ms. Varela, if you, if you'd like to work in your mic, I'll come back to you if. Yeah, we can't hear you right now. Tell you what, we'll just put you on mute. I will come back to you before we, we close. I'd like to recognize Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Terry McNeil, precinct two. My wife and I have four kids who've gone through Milton schools, two are at Glover, one going to Pierce next year and two who left Pierce for private school in part because of concerns we have about enrollment. And that is a challenge we're not tackling tonight. What we're tackling tonight is how to get, and I want us to tackle that as so many do, but what we're tackling tonight is what to do about next year. We're not talking about a five-year financial plan, which Mr. Fahey raised and I fully support. We're not talking about future overrides. We're not talking about challenges and concerns that parents had on all ends of the spectrum, including myself and my wife for this year. We're talking about how to get our kids back to school next year. And it's a targeted list of positions which are intended to get them back to baseline when they're finally fully back in school for a school year. It involves a middle school guidance counselor, which for those of you, and I, I'm 43, so I'm on the younger end of town meeting member age. A middle school guidance counselor doesn't do what they did 30 years ago. They do a ton at getting kids and parents acclimated and through school, not just academically, but socially and emotionally and every other way you can imagine. And Pierce Middle School has 100 more kids than it had a decade ago. 100, just in a decade. And that's with people leaving. Here, lots of people say people leave MPS. They do, but there's still a ton of kids. Our enrollment is surging. And to get an over-enrolled school district back to baseline after a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic takes a number of positions that frankly, we can afford. We have the money in the stabilization fund to do it and it's a targeted amendment. What I particularly like about what Mr. Matthews is proposing is he diminished the amount of, that the school committee was outlining by an amount we're already getting from the state. This is targeted and intended to do only what is necessary to get us where we need to be next year. And if folks want to talk about opening up a one, you know, the budget of the school committee and looking everywhere for an override, of course, we should do that. This isn't an override. This is how to get our kids back to school in the fall. The last point I would mention, I did join the warrant committee and school committee meetings earlier this year. In part, that split vote and the select board raised similar concerns was predicated on us getting federal funds. And I've heard a lot about that tonight. The hope of some who were opposing this budget request was that the federal funds would come in by town meeting. Well, here we are. We don't have those funds. And that is why we are proposing we use the stabilization fund. And if the federal funds come in, they can be used to pay back the stabilization fund. But absent those federal funds, and if we deny the use of the stabilization fund, we lose these targeted positions and we lose exactly what we need to get our kids where they need to be in September, which is just a few months away at this point. So I fully support Mr. Matthews's amendment and I hope others do as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Varela, are you back? Boy, it's still in and out.
All right.
I'm sorry. You're just forgetting one word out of 10. Do you want to try to dial in by phone and we can connect you that way?
Sure. So I'll call my friends. Yep.
All right. We'll look for the phone number and connect you in. Thank you. I'll go to Dr. Pavlicek. Sir, you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Glenn Pavlicek, precinct 10. I rise in, in favor of this amendment. I'm not going to repeat what other people have said, but I do want to address a couple of things that have been said. It was said early on that in the 90s, the school department chose to go to a one-line budget. That is actually not true. Massachusetts legislature in every form mandates under chapter 71, section 34, that town meeting in a town, for instance, generates a one-line budget for the school system. So it's not a, a school system preference. It is something that's mandated by the legislature. In response to that, the school department does provide, and I have for the past seven years, the school budget that lineup by line item breaks out in, you know, 60 pages of detail that's been on the website and in the library and various different places, exactly what we spend it on. And to the extent that money can be moved around in it, that's true. But it's sort of a matter of honor that when you say you're going to spend it for something, you do. And that's what we come up with every year. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other mention was that we went from $44 million to $54 million in, in five years. I would also point out that during that period, the enrollment increased by between 12 and 15%. So in order to do what you needed for $44 million, you needed about $60 million, $50 million just to handle that without any cost of living increases. So although it sounded like a large amount in five years, really it was driven by the increased enrollment. And finally, there was a statement about overrides being held at strange times. Milton has a history in terms of overrides that we talk about them at town meeting first and then vote them. And so if overrides are not on the November ballot, that's because we have Baytown meetings and we've had overrides in June or we've had special town meetings in February and overrides in April. It's to give town meeting the opportunity to talk about them and then put it to, to the electorate. Some communities do it the other way around, but that's been the history in Milton. So I don't, don't want to repeat anything else that was said about the, the merits of this, but I did want to address those three feet, three facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to recognize Mr. William White. Sir, you're recognized.
Hey, thank you. Bill White, precinct six in East Milton. You know, appreciate Glenn and, and others' comments. I was just thinking a little bit also about the value of our homes have increased quite a bit since 2017. And, you know, in addition to the additional population, you know, you know, because of our town and really because of our schools, we're, we're seeing this influx of, of young families. I'm, uh, my kids are old. We're, we're, we've moved on. Uh, our kids are graduated or in college. And so, you know, we look from afar. But, you know, during pandemic, we're all working from home, or at least many of us are. And so I'm actually, you know, getting to see all the young families in my neighborhood and, you know, talking to those parents and I, I know what they're going through. And it's been a brutally hard year for them. And it's, it's not just raining, it's pouring for them. And so I think about those kids, you know, who are struggling, you know, with all the missed time and all the hybrid. As hard as we worked in order to kind of patch that together, we all know that we had a loss, a loss of education. And so we're talking about reading specialists. We're talking about guidance councils. We're talking about science teachers. I think, you know, to all the folks who are concerned about next year, and, and by the way, to, to the, to the chairman of the warrant committee, this is not personal. You know, we respect you guys. We appreciate the work. But, and, and we know we're going to have a problem next year. By the way, I've been at this for many, many years, like others. And, you know, this is not new. Milton has always had these budget struggles. They are painful. They don't seem to always have solutions, but we, we manage. We've been managing in a pretty good way. We've been finding solutions. And so I guess I would just ask us, you know, I think Terry or, or maybe Kevin mentioned this, this stabilization fund. I mean, this is really what the stabilization is for. I mean, it, it's, it's kind of painful to put away money and not, and not, not spend it, but it is smart and I'm glad we have done it, but it is now. Now is the time. These kids, these kids need the support. And I would ask folks, you know, this is a two-third vote. We need, we need to have the, this funding. These kids can have already kind of been impacted by, you know, for a year. Let's not waste another year. Let's not think about a three to six-year plan. Let's think about next year and let's do the very best we can for these kids. And let us know that collectively together as a government and as town meeting, we're going to continue to solve the economic challenges that this town has always faced. Thanks very much for your turn.
Thank you, Mr. White. If I could just have a minute? Thank you. Just a, a point. We're actually going to have two votes tonight. One will be on the motion to amend and that motion to amend is a majority vote. And that'll be the first vote we take. We're not quite there yet. And then after the result of that, we'll go back to our main motion amended or not. And then we'll have that amount of money would then be a two-thirds vote to act on article five amended or not. So two different votes, two different types of majorities. Uh, I think Ms. Varela, you're back by phone. If you could.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Loud and clear. Fire away.
All right. Super. I'll be really brief because both Dr. Donahue and Mr. McNeil and Mr. White were quite eloquent. But the last thing I guess I want to say is that at the past year and a half, leading the school committee during this pandemic, the one thing I learned about being a leader in the town during a racial and a health pandemic is that you sometimes have to throw the best practices out the door. And a lot of what we received in our meetings with the select board and the warrant committee is, well, this is our best practice. This is our best practice. Due to overpopulation, I just want to remind everyone that all three elementary schools are overpopulated by over 100 children. Some are 118, some are 122. Tucker's the only one that's only overpopulated by 60. So that's already been there and then the pandemics happened, but only exasperated the situation. So again, it is pouring and we would still be left with roughly about $3.4 million in the stabilization fund. We would not, you know, dry the entire thing up. And, and the impact of not being able to put these boots on the ground with the overpopulation crisis and going back still in a pandemic, it's just the only person that's going to hurt is the, is the kids. And also to Mr. Fahey's point, many, many speakers ago, you know, I'm all for too, where is the five-year plan? As a school committee, we have been talking to the warrant committee and the town administrators and the select board for the five and a half to six years I've been on the board, telling them about the overpopulation crisis and that we are going to need boots on the ground due to this. So the school committee, it's not our job to generate, you know, commercial growth, smart commercial growth. Our job is to advocate for the children. We are dealing with people buying houses in this town with three or four children a pop and we need to meet their needs. So, so that is why we are respectfully in disagreement with the select board, the town administrator and the warrant committee. And when I was on school committee and I can see why they are, Dr. Craig had eloquently spoke. So as a town meeting member and a longtime advocate at the school, I respectfully ask that you support Mr. Matthews' comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I see three hands raised. What I'd like to do is recognize these last three members and then we'll go to the closing opinions of, of some of the boards. So Mr. Heine, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Stanton. So, Mr. Heine, you are recognized.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heine, town meeting member precinct two. Given the hour and the fact that we are zero down and 48 to go, I don't know if it's appropriate to move to end debate and call the question as to the motion, but that is what I would like to do if that is in order.
We actually already executed the only vehicle we have per our bylaws, which was that limiting to five minutes and to a speaker speaking once. So we don't have a provision actually for moving the question within our bylaws.
Okay. Well, then stop wasting your time.
No, no waste of time. Good question. Thank you. Next, I'll go to Mr. Johnson. You're recognized.
Good evening. Scott Johnson, precinct nine, town meeting member and member of the warrant committee. I want to, I want to say to everybody that this was not an easy decision. And I want to clarify some things. The split vote. The split vote was not a close vote. It was after eight hours of deliberation, and it was a nine-to-five vote. So everybody's acting like this was a close vote, and it was not. It was thoroughly vetted. And during those times, we discussed the quality of the education overall in Milton and how it could be improved. And I publicly have committed myself to making Milton one of the top 10 schools in the state instead of 85th or whatever place, depending on the survey you read. Because I think the taxpayers and the children of Milton want to be number one. I don't think they want to be in a mediocre situation. So I empathize specifically what's going on. Now, what we don't want to do is we don't want to be picking, or we don't want to be doing a knee-jerk response for a short-term issue that is going to have ramifications for years and years down the road. And, and what we're saying is, once these positions are funded, they're going to go on into perpetuity. So it's great to take the funds from the stabilization fund this year and think it's a one-shot deal, which is what the stabilization fund is more geared towards. But this is a long-term problem. Some other things that are clarifications that people maybe aren't thinking about it. The schools have already received $833,000, $983,000, almost $1 million from the coronavirus relief fund. The total impact of the pandemic on the U.S. economy was $489 billion. The U.S. government has already printed $6 trillion, and they're looking at possibly printing another $3 trillion more. There are going to be funds that are going to be coming. And we're not guaranteed that these funds can be used to pay back the stabilization, the stabilization fund. But we do know that we're going to get money down the road here, and probably sooner than you think. And we've already got almost $1 million from the coronavirus relief fund. So what happened to December? In December, we had an emergency town meeting, and we voted for three new positions in the schools. And this school department chose to hire an equity person and not the educational people. And when we questioned them about where the money was for those two people they didn't hire, they basically didn't tell us where the money was. They wouldn't, they didn't answer the question. And then the next thing that, that happened is they said, well, we couldn't find anybody at that time of year. And that may be true, it may not be true. But what I'm saying is, you've got to look at all sides of the story and how hard we as a committee looked at this situation. And what we did to make sure we did the right thing for the town overall, there's 14.7% unemployment in the town right now. There's a lot of problems that are, that are.
Mr. Johnson, you there?
I'm just stating the facts.
Mr. Johnson, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
You've got one minute, please.
Yeah. What's going on here? Hold on a second. Hold on, I got to silence this thing. I can't. So my phone was, was talking that way. So anyway, that's, that's where I was. That's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
My cell phone is talking. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I can't.
Mr. Johnson, I think we got your points.
This, that's my point. And I urge people to stand by the warrant committee that put countless hours into vetting this situation. And you're going to get your money, and the children are going to be taken care of, and we're going to get the best education, I give you my word, to make this a much better school system than it's ever been. Thank you.
Thank you. That was within the five-minute limit. Mr. Stanton, you're our last speaker, and then we'll go to our last two boards. You recognize her? Mr. Stanton, you need to unmute. Mr. Stanton, you still there? Last call. Okay, I'll take it as not. So we'll close the debate on this motion to amend, as is our policy. We first go to the, I'm sorry, I got a question. Yes, we will go to the submitting board for their opinion on the motion to amend, and then we'll go to the warrant committee for their opinion on the motion to amend. So with that, I'll recognize Melinda Collins, the chair of the select board, for your opinion on this motion to amend, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our board does not support the motion to amend. I would like to reiterate that it took 18 years to get to $4.6 million from $900,000. That's 4% of our operating budget. It really should be at least 10%. 15 to 17 would be, make, put us in a much stronger place. I note again, the select board's concern for FY '23. The state was not on track with its budget last year and used a month-to-month budget based on the previous year's budget. So eventually, we were able to replace that money because they actually were able to get to a higher funds for FY 2021. But this year, the state legislature is on track, and we got what we're getting, which is an additional $62,000, $57,000, which is going to the schools and the remainder directly to the library from the state. There will be no adjustment to the state budget to restore funds. We will not be able to fund these costs going forward, restore stabilization, and rebuild free cash. Remember, we're in the hole now for twice that much. We can't make up the lost ground in other departments then as well, such as the library and public safety. Again, the MPD, the Milton Public Police Department, is down two patrol positions, and the Fire Department is down training and overtime. And the DPW this year has cut $125,000 in small construction projects that residents depend upon, especially at a time when people note the condition of so many roads. The library continues to be underfunded. And as the school committee stated, they asked for these positions last year. They're not pandemic-generated positions. They're ongoing positions. We heard too that these salaries increase between 5 and 7%, 7% a year. And we cannot use federal funds to repay stabilization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Lastly, I'll go to Mr. Asher as the chair of the warrant committee. Mr. Asher, if you could avoid long comments and just give us a sense of the warrant committee's opinion on the motion to amend as soon as you have your vote.
We'll go ahead and take the vote, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. For the benefit of the new town meeting members, whenever we have a motion to amend, the last two things we do is we ask the submitting authority for their opinion on the motion, and then we ask the warrant committee for their opinion on the motion. They report back to you, and then we go to your vote. That's what we're waiting for right now, is the warrant committee will take a vote of their members. And if it's of interest, if we find the time, we get questions on whether we have quorum. I think we currently have 247 town meeting members, and our quorum is 145. So we are about 100 beyond quorum right now. So thank you for all your attendance late at night on this important issue. If you're old enough to remember what those were.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. The warrant committee has had significant discussion of this point. We did take a vote. I do want to just clarify that while we do have town meeting members who do sit on the warrant committee and we prize their opinions and their effort, it is appropriate for the chair of the warrant committee to usually speak on, to always speak on behalf of the warrant committee. And whatever opinions are raised as town meeting members should be construed as town meeting members. While we vote, the vote of the warrant committee was not to support this amendment. And I will tell you, it was by a majority of 10 to four voting members. So it was not a split and close. It was overwhelmingly voting against this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. So we'll now go to the vote. As a reminder, we're voting on the motion to amend Article 5 to increase the total expenditure for the schools to $871,000 and the total budget to $1.151,000. This is a majority vote to amend later on. Depending on the outcome of this, we'll have the two-thirds vote to actually authorize the expenditure. So if we could put up the polling question, please? And if we could unmute the phones, if there are any phones left. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Please remember to click submit. Are the phones unmuted? On the phone, all those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye. Remember, star six to unmute. All opposed on the phone?
No.
Thank you. We can unmute the phones. And we can close the poll and display the results. The motion to amend fails with a vote of 43% yes, 57% no, and 0% abstain. So with that, we'll now proceed to any further discussion. I'm hoping there is not on the motion before the floor, which is to approve Article 5 as recommended in your warrant on page 22. Let me pull up my participants. I see no further questions. I have to get my participant window back. Very good. We will go toward, with the vote, to approve Article 5 against the two-thirds vote. We put up the polling question? And if we could unmute the phones. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. On the phones, all in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute the phones. And then close the poll. And display the results. The motion carries with 76% yes, 21% no, and 3% abstain. So I declare a two-thirds vote on Article 5. I would like to entertain at this point a motion to adjourn to tomorrow night, Tuesday, May 4. I see a motion from Ms. Agostino. I see a second from Mr. Walker. Could we put up the poll, please, briefly? All those in, it's not quite there. There we go. And unmute the phone. All those in favor to adjourn till tomorrow night, please signify by saying aye. And by voting yes. All those no, please vote no. Abstaining, please vote abstain. And on the phones, on the phones in favor of motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know no other knows. Thank you. You can close, you can mute. I think we can close the poll and put up the results. And it passes by 98%. Thank you very much, folks. We'll see you here tomorrow night at 7:30. Thank you very much for your attendance on a late night. Good night.